It did. Yeah, recording has started?
Yep.
Wonderful. All right. Good evening. I would like to call the September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five regular meeting of the Bethel Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. It is seven oh three P M. And I would like to go ahead and start with introductions. Can we start on the screen with our commission members? That's you, Kevin.
And that's.
Yep. No, I was letting Nick go first if you want. Kevin Stephen, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Nick Sacramani, Commissioner.
You.
Nicholas Jordan, Commissioner Vice Chair.
Danielle Monroe, Chairwoman.
Terry Rotella, Commissioner.
Dan McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
And Amanda.
Amanda Martina, Reporting Secretary.
Thank you. Um, Terry is our alternate, right?
No.
No, you're our commissioner. Nicholas is our alter.
No, all four members are there.
And neither of them are here.
So you have all five full.
We have all we need. Okay, so there's no seating. All right. Um, before we get to our business, do we have any amendments to the agenda that we need to put in?
As always, thank you very much for asking, Madam Chair. I do have two amendments to offer. One is an application for regular activities. Thirteen Pleasant Street, that would go into new business, and fifty-six Codfish Hill Road. I forget the application year number for that, but that would go under staff report.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to amend our agenda to include thirteen Pleasant Street under new business. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Terry. I hear the motion, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. Let's do it verbally.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. I would also entertain a motion to amend the agenda further to include fifty-six Codfish Hill, Codfish Hill Road? Codfish Hill Road under staff report. Anyone like to make that motion? All right, I hear a motion by Terry. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I hear a second by Nicholas. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, starting on the screen.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And simultaneously.
And simultaneously. We're so fancy. Are there any other motions that we, that modify the agenda that anyone would like to bring to the table before we move on? Okay, hearing none. It looks like we are ready for old business. So, oh, flashing phone distracted. That we would start here, I think, with thirteen Redwood Drive.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. And do we have someone here to present for thirteen Redwood Drive?
I believe Mr. Mazuko is on representing the applicant this evening.
That is correct. Hello, everyone. I'm representing Carlos Gauman on this proposal for a single-family dwelling. And if I can, I'll share my screen, you know, just walk you through some of the changes that took place since we did the site walk.
Should be able to share your screen, Mike, letting me know if there's any issues. Got it.
Got it?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just make that full screen for you guys.
I can read it much better now. Yeah, right.
Okay. Are you seeing me Zoom?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So we, we received some comments from commissioners at the site walk. We also received comments from the engineering consultant. And we went in and we made some revisions. We ended up pulling the discharge point away from the wetlands for the detention system, the footing drain. I redirected. It had to get out to this point because of elevation. Originally, I had it going around this way. But there were some, there's a decent, there's some decent trees in here that we wanted to try to stay away from and leave and not touch. So we pulled the plantings back away from that area. And then, as I said, we redirected the footing drain around this, this side. And then we added some more plantings in this area here. I think added another row. So we added more plantings. And I did show a pipe from the detention system over for the pool for draining of the pool for maintenance purposes in the future. And I think that was.
Where's that drainage line ending? Where does it terminate?
Uh, the detention system?
Yeah. Well, no, the discharge moved. Okay.
Well, it's just, it would be, it would be an inlet if somebody wanted to drain the pool.
Not for the pool, just to that.
It's just, it's, no, it's not for everyday draining. It's for, if you were draining the pool for maintenance purposes, you would be able to drain it into this detention system.
The, the pipe that you rerouted, not the pool.
Oh, the footing drain.
Yes.
Yes.
That one's ending. Where does it end now? Where is it terminating?
Right here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's pulled back from, can you sort of indicate where it was before?
Well, that one really didn't change because of the elevation we need to be at with the footing drain. The other one here dumped out around the same point. We had the discharge near the footing drain outlet. So that was pulled back because that elevation of that outlet place higher. So I could pull that back for, for that reason. I couldn't touch the footing drain though. But the footing drain is, is, it's minimal amount of water. And usually when it does come out, it's not any, there's no peak rates of flow coming out of a footing drain pipe. It's, and it's all just groundwater.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. So, yeah, that was really the, the gist of the changes.
Mike, I have some questions when you're ready. This is Nico, Nico Jordan here. Um, so the area of concern for me for this site is that section of woodland to the southeast, bordering the wetlands there, which we talked about trying to keep as preserved as possible. And my question is, can we pull that, you know, that limit of disturbance line that juts out for the footing drain and that's closed? It's, and I, and it's nice that we were able to move the outlet drain from the outlets from the stormwater system back. But to what, I'm still concerned about to what extent you're going to have to excavate within that limit of disturbance and silt fence, fence line um, to achieve, because that's part of that old grove there that we're trying to protect.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, it's not a lot. It, we, we don't really need a lot to dig out because it's shallow. The footing drain is pretty shallow at that point. But we are plantings. We have the discharge from the stormwater management system here. And one of the quest, uh, one of the comments by the, the engineer wanted a swell along here. So we had to do some grading to get that swell in uh, per his comment. The one thing I forgot to mention was they wanted a swell. So this wasn't going onto the driveway. So we could keep it onto our lot. So there is a little bit of grading there. So I can't really tighten that up anymore, unfortunately.
So this swell is added in to the project and the swell is, uh, below grade? Or are you adding material or did you dig?
It's, it's just, there is some adding and then there's some cutting, but most of it's just adding a little bit of material. So the water from this site is not draining onto the neighbor's driveway.
Okay.
There was that little divot there, correct? It divoted down. I, I remember.
Well, yeah, there's a low point here where the call, where the call.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, I remember distinctly.
Yeah, that's the reason why we, we graded the swell because they made it, the engineering consultant wanted that swell in there.
I guess I'm still wondering, you know, the whole point, one of the whole points of leaving that section, that fifteen, what's the distance there? It's like.
For what here?
One inch equals twenty feet or what do we?
Are you talking about the distance between the well and here?
Correct, yes.
All right, to the, to the silt fence? To the wetland here. Unfortunately, I can't see my. I gotta move this icon. Sorry.
And to finish my thought, that one of the reasons that.
It's like fif, uh, fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet, okay. So you know, anything, any buffer, this forested buffer zone is good for maintaining the quality of a well and protecting well. So it's, even though we moved the outlet control to this, from the stormwater management system back.
We did.
By still grading in there and, and disturbing the soils up until the wetland for this other outlet pipe from the, from the footing drain pipe, it kind of defeats the purpose of using that forested root-rich area of the, the existing trees that are there as the buffer zone. If we, you know, the whole, one of the rea, one of the reasons this was going to be so good was because that, that water coming out of the stormwater system is going to go and filter right through and over those roots and infiltrate, you know, and get cleaned by those trees there, which are now no longer there because that's all going to be disturbed. Anything within the silt fence line? So that's a question I have.
Well, I mean, we're, we're not, just because there's silt fence there doesn't mean this is all going to be, you know, clear cut. Whatever, whatever can remain will remain. And we're also doing some additional plantings in here. So.
What I see.
Pulling and pulling the, pulling the outlet back further was probably more, was more important because it was, it used to be down by the footing drain outlet down here.
Right, but can we keep the woods there between the wetlands so that that runoff from the footing drain is buffered before it gets to the well by the natural system? Can you pull without changing the slope? Here's another question, kind of along this line. Can you pull the, you know, without changing the slope of the footing drain outlet, can you just pull it back and have it drain up near where the splash pad is?
No, because I got, I have to get to a certain elevation. So I'd have to excavate that whole thing out so I can get it, so I can get it down to the proper elevation that I need to be at. So you know, that you're, that you're not really accomplishing anything there by pulling it back because I'd have to cut that, I'd have to cut a new swell in there.
And you'd also create a lot more disturbance in that area. You would have to get access to it for the machinery to do so. You have to move all the soil to do so as well. I remember that discussion as well. We discussed that a little bit. Um, in the last conversation, it'd be a little counterintuitive, cause more damage than help.
And, and can I, can I piggyback on that too, Mr. Stephen, if I may? I, I, I think a, a point of concern, um, that was a, a good one to raise by Mr. Jordan at the last meeting was the velocity and volume of water that was going to come out of that footing drain. And if I recall correctly, those, those numbers compared to the water that would discharge is overflowing to that rip rap pad are, are, that's, those are pretty minimal. Is that?
Minimal.
So I, I, I think the commission should consider weighing, uh, what, what good it would do to excavate more area away closer to the wetlands for a pipe that's going to have water flow out of it very slowly and at very low volume.
Probably not have a great deal of reach in terms of where it's permeating each of them.
Right, right. I, I, I mean, if, if, I mean, and I'm not the design engineer, Mr. Mazuko would speak to that. But I imagine if that water was going to come out at any rate where erosion would be a concern, there would be a splash pad or something to that effect to combat any concerns for erosion, which.
I'm just concerned about the, the construction being so close to the well in general and, and.
So, so that's, that's another good, uh, facet to this is, is this impact or, or this area of disturbance, it's, it's temporary. That's correct. In, in other words, once the pipe is installed and once those plants are planted, that area is not going to get touched again. I mean, that's, that's the idea, correct?
Correct.
Right, the mature existing forest root structure ecosystem that's there protecting the well and naturally now will no longer be there. It will be cut through. And it will be an avenue for erosion to, to. I'm wondering if there's, if you can make a rain guard.
Erosion from, erosion from what?
Just rainfall and storm events that would otherwise be protecting and from stormwater outlet.
Yeah, I mean, you got rip rap as a, as a protective measure. This is all going to be, you know, you're going to have a temporary issue when you're doing, during construction. Once this gets all finished and you get lawn on there, it's going to transition from lawn into woods. There's going to be no erosion issues. There's no large watersheds coming from this property. So there's, that, that's not going to be an issue once this thing gets developed and the lawn comes in.
Could the footing drain drain to a rain garden right off the corner of the house there or out in the yard, just to the east of the stockpile, soil stockpile area, for example?
No. No, it's too high in elevation.
Could you talk a little bit about the plantings that you're going to be adding there?
Yeah, so it was a series of plans. I think there's three different. So the legend is here, some high bush blueberries, some spice bush and some silky dogwoods. I think it's.
Some trees in as well as some bushes.
Yeah, it's. I mean, this is all treated. It gets a little thin over here. I mean, that's, that's a possibility. I mean, could be done.
Silky dogwoods are not trees?
What's that?
Silky dogwoods are trees, are they not?
Oh, the dog, yeah. I mean, I don't know if you're looking for something different, but these are.
No, I was just getting a, a, I was trying to get a feel for what you're putting in. And if you're planting shallow root structure plants or deep root structure plants and trees are going to.
A little bit of mix of both.
That's what it looks like.
Well, it doesn't quite accomplish the, the goals that I needed to accomplish for this site, unfortunately, Mike.
Where, uh, where does, is, is a little bit of disturbance reflected by the silt fence that's going to be placed?
Well, I have, I have the silt fence, which is this line, you know, the heavier thick line, but then right behind it is a construction limit line because that's usually the limit of construction anyway.
Right, okay.
I mean, in this case here, except for the plantings, but that's, you know, I don't really consider that. You know.
You're adding that, taking away there. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah. And this area here, if you remember, probably from, well, here, here's the line here that highlighted lines. This all, this area is all just kind of like grass and lawn right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the other neighbor's yard, correct?
Well, they're using, I think they're using it as theirs, but it's not technically their.
But it's not theirs, yeah.
Right, right. So we're trying to pull back, you know, that lawn area by these plantings. This just gives some buffer to the wetlands.
Here's a question that, that, that I think may help expedite this conversation. Not that it's not a valuable one. Um, it, it's, does, is, is it your client's intent to clear cut anything within those, a, a, any trees within that clearing limit line?
What do you mean? Which, which side of the clearing limit line?
Uh, behind the silt fence.
Towards, towards the, uh, towards Redwood Drive and towards the proposed single-family dwelling.
Uh, you, you mean clear cut like this area here?
Correct. A, a, anything, anything that's within that area there, that's correct.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I think pretty much for the most part, it'll be, you know, cleared out. Now, if there's a tree down in here or this area could be left, if there's something here that we can work around the swell, then I'm sure they'll leave that. Whatever we can leave, we're going to leave. We don't want to take any more trees down than we have to because it costs money to, to get, to take the trees down and then get rid of the stumps. So.
Is, is there a, a, a reasonable phone number that could be set as a buffer off of that clearing limit line for mature trees to remain? Where, where, where it's practical and applicable?
No, not really, because any number that you have, I mean, we've got the detention system here. So we just can't arbitrarily pick a number because we, we'd be too close here. And we have, we have to clear all of this out.
Yeah, and, and, and it's not, it's not about trying to achieve a number. And it's not about trying to compromise installing a underground detention system. But, but say if there was a tree that was well outside the area where that detention system would go, that, uh, you know, that, that would otherwise.
Maybe it's possible, absolutely. I have, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's what Nico's trying to.
Speak for me.
Okay, sorry.
And, and this whole area down that I'm kind of encompassing, any trees that you can work around and leave, yes. And even with the footing drain pipe, we could always, if there's a tree, if there's a tree like, say, right here, a nice tree, we could just take the footing drain and go around it.
I'm just concerned because I've seen with all of the construction projects that we've been reviewing, that the limited disturbance line is essentially the clear cut, a, a clear cut line. I haven't seen anything in four years working on this board where that, anything within the limit of disturbance has not been completely ungraded. Um, and that concerns me in that section so close to the well. Still.
I don't know. I mean.
How, how tight of a line do you need? How minimal can your disturbance be there? To get your, how, what's the diameter of the footing drain outlet pipe?
It's, it's a four-inch pipe. But you know, between the swell and the, and the pipe and the footing drain and the outlet for the stormwater management system, I mean, we have to work in here. There's no question. There's no question about it. And then our fill package starts to begin here for the stormwater management system. So this is filled in so I can meet the, you know, the design requirements that we have to.
Can you connect the footing drain to the stormwater management system?
No.
No.
No, they're too high and we don't, we don't connect footing drain pipes to stormwater management systems.
Do, why not?
Well, because if, especially in the springtime, if you have a very wet lot, you're going to have those footing drains running. And they would be constantly filling up the stormwater management system. And you don't want that because that's reserved for storm events.
Yeah.
So we, we always separate them out. Plus, you don't want to have a situation where, let's say you connected a footing drain pipe into the stormwater management system and that thing, you know, got, you got a big storm event all of a sudden, it's potentially backing up water into your footing drains and you, you're potentially flooding your basement.
Yeah.
Another reason why we don't do it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have one question. Uh, I'm going to kind of jump back for one second on the, uh, the removal of the native, uh, the, the native plants. Because that, to me, is the biggest altercation that's probably going to happen here, is the, the buffer zone and removing the native plants and replacing them. So inside the lot, uh, the line that you've, you've drawn here, uh, in, on, by the, uh, the management system and by the, uh, the footing drain, how much of the native plants are, are you anticipating to remove? Are you anticipating to remove most of it? Or you, like, I just want to get a clarification on that. Most of the native plants are going to be removed? So you can plant in new plants or is it going to be mainly left alone and undisturbed?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a decent amount of mature trees in there that we, that we would like to leave. There's also, I don't know if you remember correctly, but there's a lot of invasives in here. There's a lot of invasives in here.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm, I'm no problem against removing the invasives. The, the only thing is, is that for me, it's not just the trees that are, that are constituting the, the, the ecology of the wetlands. It's a lot of the smaller shrubbery as well and the smaller grassy plants that, that contribute to it. So if there's any way to keep as much native stuff in there as possible, including the, the grasses and the smaller shrubs, that, that would probably be more beneficial than just the larger old growth trees. Both provide different services. So that was my concern is just clear cutting as much of that back.
Nicholas, I can't recall. Were you able to, I know it was right when you joined the commission. Were you able to make it to this site walk?
No, I, I saw the video.
Okay, great.
I, I saw the video. So I, I noticed a lot of invasives, but I did also notice a, a, a good amount of, of smaller, low-growing native plants. That's why I was just wondering, um, on that.
The reason why I'm focusing on that corner there is because it's so rich in, uh, it's all natives and it's like mature. And there's a grove of black gum in there. There's some mature white oats through the wall. And I think it's, I know it's nice that, it is good that Mr. Mazuko so far was able to move the limited disturbance line as, you know, kind of far back as he could, um, and the outlet control structure. But then to still have to, to excavate and to grade, uh, you know, on the house side of the silt fence line slash limited disturbance line, uh, more or less, it defeats the purpose for that area. Um.
So Nico, if you.
I know I'm picking, you know.
If you were going to pick something actionable and constructive, what would you want to see happen?
Well, I'm kind of asking Mike what's possible just to, but, you know, to see, well, how, can we do a different, uh, water collection system someplace else on the property, like a rain garden or something? Or can, you know, that is already in the disturbed area, like, he's, but, but no, I mean, I mean, I'm hearing you, Mike. I'm here, I am.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
I mean, water doesn't go uphill, you know, we have to, we have to get it downhill. So.
And that's.
Just, just a quick question. So that, that drain that, that's in contention right now, that's for the stormwater management system. That's for stormwater, correct? The, so.
There's three different ones, Nick. Uh, there's, I believe, so stormwater with the pad there, that like kind of, uh, trapezoidal shape, that's coming to stormwater system, correct, Mike? And then the other one is a footing drain from what, French drains around the house that are at depth?
Yeah, yeah, the footing drain.
They start.
Yeah, the footing drain starts at the lowest point in the house here and, and then they go out here. And they have to be, you know, at the basement level or footing level.
So we're talking about two different water collection and transmission outlet?
Yeah, two separate water, two, two, two different types of water and two, yeah, two totally different types and sources of water.
Can you cut super fine? Can you just go really tight and then keep it, to get your footing drain, like, cut as few roots as possible? I mean, you're going right through that, that, uh, beach growth, it's going to be.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not very deep. If you look, my slab's at four eighty-six. I'm trying to get to an elevation of like four eighty-five. I don't, and it's almost going to be flat through here. So it's not going to be very deep. And four eighty-six elevation is right here. And it comes along here. So this pipe is not deep at all. And then when we start getting into the fill package for the detention system, so it's not a lot.
Can your machine, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can your machine cut tightly? Is it narrow? Can it do, can it have minimal disturbance? Or do you have to, you know, just to get the machine in, clear cut that whole, that whole patch of woods there, just to be like, oh, we got to put this four-inch pipe in?
We also have to put the swell in. So there's going to, there's going to be a considerable amount of construction that needs to go there. Yes, Mr. Mazuko?
Yeah, but it's, it's just a minor swell. So it's not like you're, you know, cutting two, three feet or filling the same amount. It's just, it's just minimal, just to get the water so it's not draining onto the neighbor's driveway is what the concern was. So we just showed a little earth.
Can this, can this construction be accomplished in a light on its feet manner, so to speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Without a clear cut of that area?
There's no need, there's no need to clear cut anything for a four-inch footing drain pipe. They'll use a little mini excavator and they'll go in there and they'll just get through the, to the elevation that they need to be at. It's only going to be about eighteen inches, eighteen inches if that through here.
I'm just concerned if we have to put this in as a condition of approval to formalize it, um, you know, or because it's not what's written on the map right now.
You, you, you and I are on the same wavelength, Mr. Jordan. I was wondering if the commission would want to discuss having that be a condition of approval that was added to your decision.
But how do we say that?
Well, so, so you would, so you would have, you know, uh, you want to have language that, that speaks to the effect of, in the wetlands agent, a project contractor or some other expert would be out to observe the site while that component of the system is, is getting installed to verify, you know, that the methods that you as the commission have determined are appropriate are being implemented as you approved them.
And I think we need to tighten up exactly what those conditions are, as we are requested.
That, that, that's, that's reasonable language, is it not, Mr. Mazuko?
That's fine. That's fine. Get it done.
You got all that, Amanda?
That'll be good.
I'm kidding.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, I, no, I got it.
I'm sorry. It, it, it's broad enough. I was, I was just thinking myself in silence over here as to how you can actually substantiate or verbiage that would be specific enough for what you're looking to do, but, but allow leniency to get the job done too, because you can't say leave without pointing to individualized shrubs or defining a quantity of disturbance. It's tough to substantiate that. So minimal disturbance is. So I, I like, I like the way that was just proposed. I think that verbiage would work. So I, I like, I like the way that was just proposed. I think that verbiage would work, work well because it allows reasonable interpretation by both parties.
It's just a little vague, so I think we need to put down exactly what it is.
And define the area of that, like how we define that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm sure this can be wordsmiths when we get to the part of the agenda to discuss this. If you guys don't want to go into what staff has prepared for you right after we finish this discussion with Mr. Mizuko.
All right, so I think what you're suggesting is we should consider whether there are other points that we want to talk about on the plan.
Right, right. So, so, so what, what I, what I would suggest is if you have any other questions for Mr. Mizuko, you raise them now. And then because we have two other items on the agenda that you need to go through, you can either discuss this resolution right after you finish with Mr. Mizuko, or you can table that until later on in the meeting so that your other two applicants can get their piece time and then come back to that later.
Thank you. So are there other things that we want to discuss regarding this application?
Yeah, I had one other, one other thing. So, Mr. Mizuko, are you, you're planning to, with the landscaping, these shrubs are going to need fertilizer? Are you okay using a low like phosphorus fertilizer to preserve the, the chemical integrity of, of wetlands around the area for runoff? Because rain, if it's going down a slope, it's going to drain anyway. Just any residual fertilizer that goes into the wetlands can be an issue, especially phosphates.
Uh, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
We do have, Nick, just so you see it, it's in our, it's been in there for a while. We added into our condition, it's in the draft resolution of approval for this, but there's some, there's a line in there that, under miscellaneous section that says the usage of fertilizers will be non-synthetic. And this was Dave's language, I'm not going to, but it was like prompted by me because I had asked this similar thing early on.
Okay, so. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but we need to reword it because it shouldn't really be there as it is written right now.
Yeah, I, I have open to constructive criticism on that.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm.
You have better language, let's hear it.
I'm, I'm speaking Dave's language unfortunately, because that's how, that's how I interpreted it. Um, I, I thought I had saw, I just wanted to, to double check. But, uh, I think that a, a fertilizer that has, uh, low, low abundance of phosphorus uh, components and, uh, nitrogen components would probably be good for the wetlands because they're usually low in nutrients depending on where they're found. So I think that would be, that would be good. Now how do we word it?
So. Are we open, you are open to rewording that particular condition that we have in there to say low phosphorus?
It's not my, it's not mine.
No, your, your word.
Not our condition, not our condition.
I had initially wanted to put the word organic fertilizer.
But that has different, that has different definitions.
However, the commission wants the conditions to read, that's your discretion, so.
So organic doesn't, I don't know, I don't know a lot about fertilizer, but organic has all of these different conditions to it that might not be relevant to what we're talking about.
I was going to say, you'd be surprised what organic actually constitutes on many different levels, not just fertilizers put across the board. So that's a very generic term, so you gotta be pretty, it, it would be who must to be more specific, if possible.
Yeah. Yeah, and if Nick knows what it should be.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my experience with wetlands and I, and I've been, I've been doing wetland work and restoration for, for a good number of years now, it's usually phosphorus that is the, not only the limiting nutrient, but once it gets above, uh, you know, a certain parts per liter or parts per, per, uh, per milliliter, it, it becomes an issue with, uh, with algal blooms. So I would say that phosphorus and nitrogen would be the two that would be the most in most like concern if.
I'm sorry, Nick, do you know what those thresholds are? Because we're going to change the language.
I can, um, definitely, I, I think it, it, I, I believe it's 10. Uh, I, I have, I have it in a document, I have it in a document, I can pull it up if, if you'd like.
When we get to the, yeah, I think that would be very helpful. When we get to the end of this discussion, after we've discussed all of the different things that we want to examine and we get to writing conditions, then we can rewrite that particular condition with language that's more specific. If you can offer numbers, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other points that we want to ask Mr. Mizuko about regarding this application?
Okay. Fertilizer was the only thing on my list, actually.
Perfect, okay, so. Yes. Okay, so that being said, I think that it is probably a lovely idea that Dave put on the table that we table our discussion of the different conditions that we would like to amend or add to this application until later in the meeting so that we can get through our other business items. So if someone would like to make an amendment to table this until the end of new business.
It's not an amendment, it's just a motion to.
I meant a motion.
Motion made.
Do I hear it a second? Okay, made by Nick, seconded by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. On the screen.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, we will add that to the end of new business, yes?
Well, back to old business.
At the end of old business, okay. Woo.
I'm good.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so that means we are moving on to 15 Great Pasture Road. And who is representing Great Pasture Road?
Uh, that would be Stephen Sullivan who is with us.
Yes, good evening, uh, Stephen Sullivan here, the Google Meet, uh, professional engineer with CCLC in Brookfield. Can I share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay.
If you are speaking right now, we cannot hear you.
Nope, I'm not, I'm just getting my screen open for you.
Okay, I just wanted to check that.
See here, is this? Can you see that on your end?
We can see it, but it's very small.
We do see your mouse, uh, and now you've zoomed out and you're zooming back in on.
Is that better?
Yes. There's a monitor behind you, it's easier to follow the ground, too.
Yeah. Okay, so, so this is, uh, 15 Great Pasture Road in Danbury and then it, um, crosses into Bethel and that's where it turns into Worcester Street. The total parcel is about 14 acres, but 2.2 acres is located in Bethel. Um, what you're looking at is kind of an existing conditions plan that's in your site development plan package. You know, as you can see, Danbury has a, a large industrial building, exist and that, that will remain. Uh, but on the Bethel side, there's no building structure, it's vacant property. Uh, it's partially wooded and it's, uh, portions of it have overgrown vegetation. So to the east is Worcester Street. And then to the far west of the property is where, uh, the wetland line is delineated. Um, and Simpa, Simpa Brook is further to the west, just off the property. Um, the wetlands were delineated by James McManus of JMM Wetland Consulting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's see. Uh, I just changed screens to a layout plan, did that pop up on your end?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so in Bethel, we're proposing one building that's 9,750 square feet. And it requires 15 parking spaces for that particular building. Uh, the far majority of this proposal is in Danbury.
I don't think this is the new construction.
I also changed to, uh.
What sheet number are you on, Mr. Sullivan?
I got it.
I was, I was just on sheet C2. I can go back, I was going to change sheets, but I can go back to that if there's a question.
Sheet two where you want us to be? We are putting out the paper versions in front of us because they're easier to see.
Yep, uh, yeah, I, I, you can stay there for a second before I change, uh, sheets, but there's one other thing I'd like to point out. There is a table on, on the title block, above the title block. And it's the, it's a summary table that shows regulated area and wetland summary. So that's good data for you guys to look at, but you know, there's no wetlands, uh, disturbed. Um, and the, the regulated area disturbance is 0.024 acres, just about 1,000 square feet. And if I can change to sheet C5, which is our erosion control plan. I'll zoom out here so you can kind of get your bearings of where we are. So we're on the south side of the property. And, you know, obviously we have 100 feet off the wetlands is the, is the regulated area. Um, and what I did was I kind of crosshatched the disturbed area within the regulated area that's in Bethel. What we have here is some grading, uh, we're actually in a cut, so this grading is actually sloping away from the wetland towards the east. Uh, that's why you have a CLL line, which is a construction limit line because it's at the high point of the grade. So there'll be, for instance, like this driveway area here slopes up to the CLL line and then goes back down, uh, towards, towards the, uh, uh, west, which is where the wetlands are. So we, we show a minimal amount of actual regulated area disturbance, the far, far majority of this, of the proposed development in Bethel is outside of that 100 foot regulated area. And, you know, we, we still have to, you know, eventually it'll apply to, you know, the planning and zoning commissions as well. Uh, but this proposed build, all these proposed buildings will connect into municipal sewer and water. Uh, there'll be an interminable agreement between Danbury and Bethel as far as, uh, public utilities for water and sewer. Let's see here. Oh, also, let me just see. I'm going to change plans to our, change, uh, sheets to sheet C6.
What is the, what's the GSF line?
That's a geotextile sediment fence, that's our silt fence line.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so this area right here, you know, this cut area, uh, that's in Bethel. You know, that's going to be like a two to one slope, so we, we, we have a, uh, erosion control seed mix. The remaining erosion control restoration mix for those dry sites. And that's what's proposed, uh, to be seeded and stabilized as far as the area within the regulated area, uh, this small area, and then also going east towards Worcester Street.
So it's all baking toward your parking lot there?
Correct, yes, we are, yes, it is sloping, sloping towards the parking lot.
That's, I, I didn't want to interrupt it, but from the looks of it, if you're going to regrade and downgrade it towards the parking lot and assume that what you want is water flow to end up going, if we're looking west to east here, it's going to go east.
Correct.
So e- essentially, even though it's a downward slope towards the wetland, you're, anything that affects your property or from structural perspective, you're having flow east away anyways. So Mike, the only question I would have is the opposite of what we usually ask. The, what you're doing then is you're putting water flow from the property away essentially from the wetland or, or that way it doesn't accumulate and flow out. Will there be negative impact because not enough water is getting to the wetlands?
No, because you still have, you still have 11, uh, actually, let's see, not all 11.
Oh, yeah, if you scroll up, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, you still have all this area in Danbury that goes towards the, the brook in the wetlands.
Got it.
I guess, uh, in general terms, half the site drains towards the street and the other half, and these are round numbers, the other half drains towards the west, towards the wetlands.
Now, I, I guess the only question that I would ask from, and, and before we get into any other part of the building or anything of that nature, yada, yada, yada. The water flow that's currently flowing into the wetlands, pre and post what you're doing, how much of an impact will that have on the wetlands and what is the difference in it? Because essentially what you're going to do is you're going to just change the flow of water in total.
Yes.
Into different areas. So my, my main question is that what will be the water flow impact to the wetlands? Because even though it's, it's on a line of disturbance, that's obviously all downhill grading. So anything that you push away from that grading is going to be less water into the wetlands.
Yeah, so we have a stormwater management plan and, um, we did our pre and post development analysis, uh, essentially runoff from the site will be collected into your catch basins, your standard catch basins with sumps and then go into a hydrodynamic separator to filter and pretreat, uh, the runoff. Uh, and then I have a series of, um, vegetated basins, uh, there's three of them. And then we also have one underground gallery system. All of those systems, um, attenuate peak flows and also, uh, recharge the water quality volume, which also by virtue of recharging water quality volume, you're also recharging the groundwater recharge volume. Um, and, um, so for instance, uh, the, the, the peak, the pre-development peak flow to the west towards the wetlands, uh, for this site was 21.9 CFS, that, this, this is a 25 year storm. And the post, the post development is 19.8. So there's a slight reduction in peak flow to, um, yeah, uh, you know, to, as required by, uh, you know, Danbury in this case, uh, they want a 20, 25 year peak flow, uh, attenuation. But we are recharging the water quality volume and the groundwater recharge volume and, um, so we, you know, in our opinion, won't negatively impact or adversely impact, uh, Simpa Brook or the wetlands adjacent to the brook.
And, and that's exactly where I was going with this. My, my concern, first and foremost concern is denying the brook necessary water flow or inundating it with excess water flow. Uh, uh, quality of water off the table, that's a separate discussion. Question one for me is quantity of water flow. We could discuss quality of water flow if needed, because I see, it, it's tough for me too. I understand there's very little disturbance in Bethel, but I'm thinking, I mean, it flows downstream to Bethel and to Simpa, so I guess we all sharing the same, same issues, so. All right. Yeah, I, I'm just going to need to look at the, uh, the site plan a little more myself to get myself acclimated to.
Did, did you also prepare, uh, pre and post watershed, uh, pre and post development watershed maps?
Yeah, they're in the drainage report.
Okay, could, could you pull those up? Those would be very helpful.
Yes. No, that those were. I was going to say, is this on the Google Drive? Because I'm having trouble finding it.
Uh, yes, it should be.
Let, let me double check, I might be looking in the wrong place.
Just come over here, Kevin, I've got the papers all out on the table.
That makes total sense.
I'll hold them up for you.
There, there, there should be a folder in our Google Drive for this application, Kevin.
Excellent, no, I'll write it, yep.
He's scolding you, but you might be wrong. Yeah, back check.
I always think, when in doubt, I'm wrong, so.
So I don't know if you can see this screen, this is our pre-development drainage area map. This red line that my hand is following, the cursor, it's, uh, is the dividing drainage area line. Uh, everything to the right or east is flowing towards Worcester Street. Everything to the left of this line is flowing towards, uh, the west, towards the wetland in Simpa Brook.
This is what it's.
I, I got it, too.
Mr. Sullivan, that's the drainage as it is now or that's what you're posing?
That's the, that's the drainage divide, this drainage area map, yes. And then if you go to posts.
Oh, isn't it this tab? Yes.
Yeah, just taking. There we go.
Are you laughing at me?
Oh, no, no, I just.
So, um, this is more of a colorful map here. The post, the post development, um, drainage areas. So we still have, you know, we wanted to make sure we have, uh, zero increase in peak flows towards Worcester Street and also towards the west, towards the wetland. Uh, so, um, we have less, actually less drainage areas going towards Worcester Street and more drainage area in the post development is going towards Simpa Brook. But let me back up a second. Everything that's going towards Worcester Street eventually goes into Simpog Brook further down, down south. Eventually gets into the Brook. But in this instance here, we, you know, we have our predevelopment peak flow that goes towards the Brook and wetlands to the west. And we have a, we, we have enough drainage stormwater management systems to attenuate to a, just slightly below the pre, the predevelopment peak flow rates for, to the west with the stormwater management systems, so it compensates for the site's drainage area in the post development scenario to the west.
Do you know which direction Simpog Brook flows?
It goes, it goes Bethel into Danbury, it flows north.
Thank you. I see. So the water flow that you're directing, if this is, probably it isn't, but whatever, to the top and to the left, it's gonna enter Simpog Brook up above where this picture is, yes?
Uh, well, from our site, it goes, it'll, we have, um, let's see, we have one, two, three. We have our, our venture, our drainage discharge points for, for our site. There's one located right here, which is, there's a vegetated basin here. And then we have three outlet controlled pipes located here behind proposed building number two, which obviously isn't Danbury, but, yeah.
But the, I think what, I think it was Terry was asking, or maybe it was Nick, I can't recall. I'm pointing to this like you can see where I'm pointing.
No, I, let me see, hold on a second, maybe, let me change.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be very small.
Okay, I can, I'll try.
Well, I, regardless of who said it, I'm interested to know. So if this is all buffer zone for Simpog Brook, is it, where's the, where is the Brook? Over here, yes?
Yeah, there's a, there's a slope, a wooded slope that's gonna be the buffer zone.
This is all grading in, yes? Okay, so over here, are we losing volume coming in that would be keeping this whatever habitat here at the same moisture level that it's at now?
Boy, I wish I could see, I can't see where you're pointing to.
Talking about that, the wetlands area that's like part of.
Move your cursor to the right a little bit.
At the base of the, of the hill.
A little more right, on the other side of Simpog Brook. Other side.
Simpog Brook is right here.
Oh, it's not this blue line here then, okay.
And then, then there's a, there's a wide wetland adjacent to the Brook that's kind of at the toe of the slope of the the site.
What exists to the right of where your cursor is, back towards the development, all this space here between where your grading is and Simpog Brook?
Well, between Simpog Brook and the wetlands, it's wooded. And then at the toe of the slope up to where our, our construction limit line, it'll, it's wooded.
And that all is going to remain?
That's gonna remain, yeah, any, anything between that wetman line and our GSF slash CLL line, GSF is a sil fence. CLL is a, between those lines and the wetlands is wooded.
And it's not being disturbed. Okay, thank you for the clarification. And here's, okay, so that's all, and then this is.
Slow moving river, the, the actual place of the water course can shift within that flat area. Would you go see? Can we take a sidewalk?
At this point, I'm not sure. Well, we need to ask for an extension on this. We run out of time.
Well, you, you, you will run out of time between now and your next regular meeting. Because we accept the dates on August eleventh. So. No, you guys did not opt to do a sidewalk for this. As I mean, you can't, but, you know, you have less time to work with. I, I, I will say, there is an onsite soil investigation report from Mr. McManus that's attached to this application, dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, from Mr. McManus. He does give a general site description with his comments as part of that report. And that may, that may give you some more insight as to what the physical conditions out there are. I, I don't know if that would address your concern for doing a sidewalk, but I think.
Unlike us to not do a sidewalk.
If I'm remembering our discussion, which I may not be remembering it correctly, because the brain gets heat this hour of the night. If I remember our discussion, the majority of the construction is happening on the Danbury side. We don't really have a lot of disturbance really at all that's happening within our review area and we determined that Danbury would probably be looking at this through.
Has, and this really isn't relevant for us, but has, has Danbury already, has Danbury's EIC already rendered a decision on their application?
No, no, we have, our next meeting is this coming Wednesday.
Okay. I think we need that information.
So, so I, I, so the commission had asked, and I'll jump in here. I am way behind the eight ball on doing any kind of reviewing slash giving comment for you guys and for Mr. Sullivan. The commission had asked that any documents that were submitted to Danbury's EIC be folded into the record for this, not that. Environmental impacts commission. Phrase it differently there, but anyway, not that you're looking to extend your purview beyond where it's supposed to be, or into a different municipality for that matter. But you, you guys were curious about what had been submitted to the record for them, and I don't see that as being an unreasonable request. I, I think that could be added to the record between now and hopefully when this, when this gets continued at the next meeting on October twenty seventh.
So then, it sounds like Nico is interested in doing the sidewalk. Is there further interest from other commission members?
Really, okay, because I'm not even sure where on, on Worcester Street it is, or how, how deep that book is.
Okay, so Terry would be interested, Kevin?
Yeah, I'd be interested. I mean, I'd be interested to see. It's not that, like, if you can't, then it's okay. I mean, it'd be nice to see it, but from my knowledge of, of this area, it's probably gonna be just like a it's, it's gonna be similarly, you know, forest ecology to, to the rest of, you know, a newer growth forest with like, you know, some, some oaks and whatnot. So it's not gonna be like anything that I haven't seen before. But if you guys want to do it, that'd be good.
I mean, I know that area a little well. It's mostly like maple, swamp maple. There, there's a couple small oats that you could see driving by from the area, but it's the same forestry that you're looking like behind a Jay Clark circle. I, I personally indifferent, only just due to the nature of it, like, I'll let the, what the commission decides, if I can make it, I'll obviously go. I don't feel like it's necessary, just because it's for you. I think that, I think that Danbury has their hands full on it way more so than us, but
Yeah, I'm more or less indifferent.
Kevin would make an effort to attend, okay.
I wouldn't be able to attend it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
If I go, I would just FaceTime you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Aerial image of this area, would that be helpful for you guys? Do you mind if I share my screen, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, yeah, sure, I'll, I'll stop sharing.
Okay. So, let me know if everybody can see this. Did anybody see my screen?
Just for the record, I'm, I'm looking at the Google Drive documents for the applications and Google Maps to orient myself to the site.
So the imagery may not be as accurate, well, it's definitely not as accurate as survey, otherwise represented, but this is, this is the parcel in question that is in Bethel, right? So, and then Simpog Brook is this right here? Everybody see that? So, uh, I don't know where the grading limit or the clearing limit line would be relative to this. But your water course is way out here, and I don't know, I don't know where the wetlands extend to.
Our, David, our, our closest line or limited disturbance in, in is seventy five feet from the wetland line. Just for, for, yeah. So the Brook in this area is about, I'll give you a second here. It's about another hundred and seventy five feet away from our, our limited construction, the Brook.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'm comfortable with not doing a sidewalk, but I'm, I'm not speaking.
Well, I'm just thinking, do we have to go through the woods with a machete, or is it something that we can actually go in and see something?
Not really. It's gonna be a pretty steep hill for us, the hillside down to a very flat. You must see the water course. We won't go next to the water course. And you're probably not gonna wanna walk down that hill.
I was gonna say, that hill is fairly steep, the gradient's fairly steep.
They take a look out from up top.
Right.
Up top this hill.
All right, so in order to keep us on track here, are we, are we looking to request this or not? Okay, so our two commission members on the screen are fine with not doing it. Terry and Nico, would you like to weigh in on your thoughts?
I mean, I'd like to visit the site, be it on my own time, would be fine.
Well, you would need to get that cleared with the property.
Yeah.
So, so I would, I would have, I would be happy to be a go between to coordinate that site visit for you, and then what I would ask Mr. Jordan is if you are successful to arrange that visit. If you could take photographs of your observations while you're out there, so that the rest of the commission can have the benefit of seeing what you saw.
That is fine with me.
I think that would be very helpful.
Did you have any interest in going as well?
Well, not if it's, the topography is gonna be challenging. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, you know, see, what I'll do is I'll take a ride out there, look at the site.
Well, we need permission from the owners of the property before we're.
Yeah, so, so I would happy to, I would be happy to be that go between to coordinate what dates work for you and what dates work for the property for you to get out there. I, I, I would, would, just, you, you are, you are here. Would, would you be amenable to Commissioner Scoring on the property to take a look?
Sure. It, it's gonna be a very difficult walk. It's, it's very, very steep. And in all the years that I've owned that property, I've never seen the Brook on there, so. Yeah, it's, and in the back where we're talking about, it's a traumatic drop off. You can't walk down there.
Yeah.
I've never walked down there. Fairly wooded and a lot of brush, so.
Could you just state your name for the record?
Michael E. Polat. Um, so is the whole site getting renovated, like all the existing parking areas too? Yes.
Yeah.
That's gonna be nice, for the wetlands.
Yeah, the applicant's trying to get everything into these buildings that we're proposing as far as outsore, outside storage and that sort of thing.
So just to put a pin in it, you're, you're going to coordinate with the property owner to see if you can get, okay.
Right.
Okay, are there more questions that we have at this time for the applicant?
I just had a question on water quality entering the Brook. If, because I, I, the, the map was so small on the screen, and so I tried to pull up on my phone, it's just, it's not letting me zoom in for some reason. So I couldn't necessarily see. The gradient that you're running, it's, the water that'd be draining into the wetlands is, is meeting the, 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 the up slope? Or is it, is it going directly into the Brook, like on, by, by the parking lot?
Well, we're, no, we're over, we're over a hundred feet away from the Brook with our discharge points.
Okay, okay, perfect, because the, the only thing I would be concerned about is water entering the Brook. Many sort of like, you know, heavy, heavy nutrient rich water entering the Brook could be, could be damage.
No, we're, we're, we're also, you know, twenty feet above the Brook, you know, so, so our, our drainage is going through all that soil.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify because it was just a little difficult to see on my end. Thank you.
And, and David, we did, in my email to you today, I, I did grant you that extension.
So we don't need to ask for what we have.
I just did it, I just did it through the, right, directly in the email, in the body of the email.
Thank you very much for that. Would the commission have any interest in having a decision? Be ready for your consideration at the next meeting?
I can really still think we need to know what Danbury's doing. You know, about the other part of the property, because that affects our what's, what's coming under the Bethel part of it, so I think we need to know that.
Well, actually, it doesn't go into Bethel. It goes the other, it goes into Danbury, not into Bethel.
Okay. But I believe is sharing that we will have that to review in advance. So his question. Okay, I think what, what, what Dave is asking is sometimes when we, well, not sometimes, usually, when we come towards the end of a discussion, not at the end, but toward the end of a discussion, he will prepare a draft resolution for us to vote on at the next meeting, if we can come to a consensus on it. But that doesn't mean we're necessarily closing it that meeting, although we've got an extension, so we'd like to try to close it at that meeting.
Right, right. I, I just unless, unless you have any other questions for Mr. Sullivan that you would, that you would want him to look into further for the next meeting. I, just as an off the cuff comment, I don't know if there would be much to my review for him to weigh on in the way of, in the way of feedback or having to make any revisions. So if, if, if the commissioner was comfortable on rendering a decision that night, I, I, I would, I would just want to be proactive and compassionate of that, so that I could have something ready for your consideration, that even instead of having to wait until November, a week of Thanksgiving.
And also, if we have more questions, if there are things that you're concerned about that you still need answers for, that would be a really good time for us to bring that to Mr. Sullivan's attention, so he can be prepared with the answers to those questions the next time we meet.
Exactly right.
So if you have specifics, or if you just, or if you feel like what you need is to review that other material from Danbury.
And, and that, and that will be added to the record as well, most of.
Mr. Sullivan, can I ask you a question about the drainage?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. This is Nico Jordan, by the way. The, so I'm just looking at the catch bases inside for kind of the Bethel side of things, and I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to follow all the the, the drainage routes for the stormwater management that you have. And you're using two different or what do you, what do you call them? Bio retention or what do you call the?
Oh, for stormwater management, we, yeah, we have Yeah, they, they serve two purposes, one to, you know, treat water quality volume flow and also attenuate peak flows.
And you just have these two on the west side of the property that I'm seeing, or there are others that I'm not noticing?
There's, there's actually three, there's, there's two, two that accept discharge from the roofs. One's on, uh, building three and one's on building one, which is way on the north side. And then we have an area that goes into a basin just west of the cell, there's a cell tower on the property. That's just west of that is another vegetated basin, again, serves two purposes, attenuate the peak flow and recharge or infiltrate the water quality flow. And then behind building two, it's a, it's an underground coltech system that does those two items as well.
So behind building two, so I see building three down close to the Bethel border. Building two, which one is your building two?
Let me just make sure.
Two is on the west northwest.
Feel free to reshare your screen again, too.
Yeah, I can.
Proposed building one, proposed building two, proposed building three, all separate from the existing structure that's there, right?
Yes.
One to the northeast, two to the west, three to the south.
Correct.
And then are you tapping into the stormwater, some sort of a stormwater pipe here on the southwest section of the property? These colors, these catch basins?
Oh, where the, yeah, so the southwest portion of the site is getting discharged into the existing storm drainage that's on Worcester.
Southeast.
Southeast, I'm sorry. Southeast, I'm sorry, southeast, yes. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and that is able to, what is it? Yeah, is that able to handle? Is that stormwater?
Well, so, so what we did is we, 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 within the post-development scenario, there's less area and less runoff going towards Worcester in, in gray pasture. Because we're taking some of the area that went there before and managing it through our four proposed systems on the west side.
Okay, nice.
So in theory, if there was, you know, eight acres going there before, it's six acres now. I'm just using numbers to make an example.
Yeah.
Less area going towards Worcester Street as far as runoff goes.
I think it's good. Do you have comments on this?
If I did, I, I would have, I, I wish I could have already given it to you. I haven't had that chance yet. When I do get comments, I'll forward them to Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, I see.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Feel free to email us those, by the way, Dave. If you do that during the weekend, you wanna, want us to take a look at it before the meeting, I'm happy to read those.
Yeah, I, I, I absolutely want this to see, it's just, I, I have been terribly pressed for time as of late.
No pressure, no.
I don't know.
I promise I get it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Sullivan on this particular application?
I guess not. Do we have permission to go take a, to go look? Can I go visit the property at some point?
The, the owner of the property is right here before us, and he said, yes, he does, and then Dave agreed that he would.
I will, I will coordinate that for Terry if I have to go.
I want you in the wood. Hiking poles, okay. Uh, yeah, any other questions for the applicant? Okay.
I would just suggest you let me know what dates you're available, then I would forward those to Mike. He would let me know what dates work for him.
Do we need anything flagged or staked for that viewing?
It's up to you two, whatever you'd like to see.
No, I just wanted to get a layout of the.
I will say, since it's not a proper sidewalk, you probably shouldn't have anything and, and, and then, you know, you just make sure you.
Make it sure we're covering all the bases before we move on.
Let's not make it more difficult than it needs to be, but I would like to get some sense, and maybe I'm not gonna slide down the hill. But I'd like to get some sense of what, exactly what we're talking about, so.
Couldn't, couldn't the, in one wetlands commission just invest in a drone, and then we don't have to go out anymore?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Okay, anything else? In the interest of time, we still have some other applications to review. Kevin, you good?
Good.
Nick, you good?
I'm all good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, take care, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Okay, uh, then that was gray pasture, so.
Continue to October twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much. Do you need me to say that, or?
You should.
Okay, and we will continue that till October twenty-second, seven, to, to our next meeting on October twenty-seventh, which I'm sure Amanda already wrote down, she's so on it. Keeps me honest.
Does that for me, too?
Yes. All right, so then Pleasant Street is moved to New, and that's staff report. Okay, for that, to me, looks like we're moving on to New business.
Yeah.
Uh, should we start with Pleasant Street? Yes, let's start with Pleasant. Oh, do we need to return to Redwood before New? No, let's get to.
I, I would suggest you move on with Pleasant Street.
I think that sounds.
So why did I get that?
Mr. Bruno is here to discuss Pleasant Street with us, yes?
Yes.
So you guys are just accepting this application tonight? Mr. Bruno, if, if I'm understanding correctly, he's the new property owner, and Mr. Mizuko is the, uh, architect.
Excellent, thank you. We are on thirteen Pleasant Street.
And here are the application materials, um, the only thing. Oh, I'm mistaken. You do have a copy of this, sir.
Yes, it's in the drive.
Okay. Well, no, 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 I, I didn't realize that you, that you also had a hard copy. Excellent, okay. So here are the plans, and here are the supplemental documents. You guys wanna take a look at those while Mr. Bruno and Mr. Mizuko give you whatever they have to offer.
I'll share, I'll share. I'll share.
All right, so for the record, Mike Mizuko, professional engineer, I'm working with Jeff on this project at thirteen Pleasant Street, and I can share my screen and then just walk you through. Hmm, let me. Trying again. For some reason, it's not letting me share my screen.
Oh dear, uh.
Is that on your side, David?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making sure I'm not sharing my screen. No, I am not. That is odd. I don't know why that would be the case.
Is it possible that if we can't solve it, that Mr. Mizuko could just ask you to pull up whatever from the drive that we need to look at?
I could do that, I suppose.
Is that a solution for you, Mr. Mizuko, or is that not?
Yeah, that, that works. We, that's a workaround for sure.
Yeah, the site plan looks very simple.
There you go.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm following on my side.
Yep. All right, I, I would try to do my best to have my cursor follow with what you're describing, Chris.
Yeah, that, that's pretty good. So this is a, it's a vacant lot in the R-ten zone. And as you can see by the shape, it's very, there's a very little frontage on the road, and then it goes in a little bit and it opens up, and it's very thin. And it opens up towards the back, and there, as Jim McMahon is a soil scientist, prepared a report when he walked the site, there is, there are no wetlands on the property, however, you can see on the top of the map that there's a pond off-site that we located by satellite imagery and, uh, like, as well as contours. There's also, if you start going up slope or kind of to the right, there's, there's a pipe that discharges. It runs actually through the corner of the property and then discharges just over the property line. And it's, uh, it's, it's got a channel there, and it looks like it's probably, it's picking up road drainage, but it just seems like it's probably an intermittent water course, and so.
That thick dotted line that extends just past the property line?
That is the pipe.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's the pipe, and then it goes into like, the, the thinner line with three dots is, is the channel, the proximate channel based on, on the contours.
Thanks.
And so if you can, David, if you can pan over a little bit to kind of get to where the road is.
To the road, you said?
Yeah, yeah, and then, oh, a little bit more to the right. Okay, that's pretty good. So you can see, you can see there's a catch basin. It, it was really weird because I was, I was finding this pipe on the property, but I, first I couldn't figure out what was coming from, because the drainage in Pleasant Street actually runs along the street uh, and then continues down the street. So I, I couldn't figure out where this pipe was coming from. I finally found a catch basin under some trees just off the edge of the opposite side of the, of the, uh, curb. And it looks like it's picking up drainage from another developed area to the, I think it's to the, that's to the east, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. And so there's no, there's no easement that showed up on the survey. It's just, you know, one of the things that happens. And so, you know, we just took from the outlet of the discharge point, and then also the, what we, what we figured was the edge of the pond, so we took a hundred feet from that, and we came up with the RA or the regulated area line. And you can see that, you know, encompasses most of the activity, thankfully, the lot served by water and sewer. So we're not dealing with a septic system, and it's a pretty small footprint and very short driveway. So the stormwater management system, which is required, wasn't extravagant, so it's a very.
Are you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's a very small footprint for site development, and for those reasons, um, you know, we, we, we kept it really tight in terms of the amount of disturbance and, and the area that we're working in. And it is, because it does slope down from the road to the, to the west. And so that it's laid out as like a walkout, and we do have, so they set the driveway pitches down. So we have a catch basin just, just before you get to the dwelling or the garage, so that'll pick up the drainage from the driveway. And then also all of the roof runoff will be piped into the, um, into the stormwater management system. And then we just have a discharge point over towards the, um, towards the north, where there's a, kind of a quasi-stone wall there. But, you know, that's.
Not to get in, sorry. Not to get into the weeds, I know that's not what we're doing tonight, but are you proposing to make any changes to that existing pipe that traverses the property? That doesn't really have any relevance to your site?
No, we're just, we just try to stay away from it as much as possible. It's not anything critical. That, that area is, is a garage, except for maybe the back part might come down to like a, a, a walkout basement, but most of that's gonna be a slab on grade.
You just, you're not changing any of the water that is currently moving through your property, uh, relating to that pipe?
No, no, not at all. It, there's only one catch basin on the other side of the road, and then there's, there's pipes that come into that basin, but we're not altering the flows, uh, regarding that pipe and outlet at all.
Thanks.
And we also, I, there, there is a hit on the National Diversity Database, and I did make application to them. So we'll, we'll see what they come back with, and whatever they come back with, I will certainly forward to the office for your records.
Thank you. Okay. So we need to consider this application, whether or not we would like to accept it for review under site plan or public hearing.
That's correct.
Uh, so I would, I'd like to open a discussion on that, if anyone has any thoughts.
Site plan, I don't think that this constitutes the need for public hearing. There's not a lot of public interest, nor is it overly complicated or have a lot of impact outside of the gentleman himself, the applicant himself, so. Personal opinion.
I agree with Kevin on that. I don't think there's any need for a public hearing on this, considering the impact to any major, uh, you know, massive. There's gonna be, there doesn't seem to be that, that much of a need for, for the public to, to weigh in on this.
Thank you. Nico?
I'm in agreement. I think a site plan review, uh, accompanied with a sidewalk would be advisable.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we're all in agreement that, that we would be leaning towards a site plan review.
Okay.
Um, and that we would, I heard one, one request for a sidewalk.
Okay.
Anyone else wanna weigh in on a sidewalk?
Uh, i- if you guys go, I would tag along. I don't think it's necessary for me, just it's a, uh, it's one of the more simplistic ones that has come across our desk, and I think that we can handle it internally, but it's always good to see a property firsthand, given the opportunity, so. So I will, I, I will claim indifference, but I will follow your lead.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nick, I know, I know it would be difficult for you to join, other than.
Yeah, it would, it would be difficult, but, uh, I'd get FaceTimed in, uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, again, I'm indifferent completely. If you guys decide that a sidewalk is, you know, necessary, then, and you do it, uh, it's great. I, I think it, it wouldn't hurt. Um, but again, uh, you'll probably handle it. It's, it seems, it doesn't seem as complex as some of the other ones that I've come across, so.
Nico, did you wanna weigh in? Thank you, Nick.
Um, no, it sounds good. I think it's always a good idea for us to take a look at what's on the ground, especially since there's a natural diversity database hit for endangered species on the property.
Okay, Terry, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I would like to see it. Okay, so it sounds like there's enough interest in a sidewalk that we would like to request that as well.
So what items would you like the applicant to have staked and/or looked at before you conduct this site walk?
Nico, would you like to weigh in on that?
Sure, um, it looks like the corners of the house would be a good idea to do. Um. Probably where the footing drain outlet is, I see here, four-inch PVC footing drain outlet, we should take that.
That is not on this property.
Yes, yeah, it is. The footing drain pipe.
Yeah. Oh, the footing drain.
You could state that would be good, I think.
I'm sorry.
And then a proposed, maybe where the, at least where the stormwater management. Do we make them state where the stormwater?
Well, where it is at least, like, yeah.
Maybe where the stormwater management is gonna go, it would be good, because then we can see what the grading.
No, I'd like to see where this pipe is still, what this.
Oh, well, that.
So perhaps at the edge of the property, but it's not on the property.
This is the one he wants to assault the footing drain from the house, an outlet there. That's that underground groundwater pipe, treated groundwater. Then there's the stormwater management system, which is then gonna get associated with the grading going down. This is added grade. So we should probably get that marked to give us a reference on the property, and then also the outlet structure.
Terry was asking about this. So, Mr. Mizuko? Yeah, are you able to see the outlet of that pipe that isn't yours? This, okay, could you, I know we can't stake it cuz it's not on the property, but you could point it out to us visually when we get there?
Yeah, you, you, when you, let me, um, I, I can't zoom in, but you, you'll see that there's like a, uh, a chain link fence down there. Yeah, if you zoom in, you can see the, I, uh,
That's as far as I can.
The line type of a fence.
Yep.
It's just a very short, yeah, that's a stone wall, but there's a little, right near the outlet, there's a chain link fence, so you, if you look.
I saw that on a different page of this, I wanna say.
Maybe it was this one, I don't know, but I thought I saw that on one of the.
Whatever you think.
There's a wire fence down.
Yeah, you, you, you can miss it. You'll see where the grade changes to a, uh, a water course and ditch, and you'll see right, right where it starts is where the outlet is.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
So Nico, for the record, which things did you propose that we state? The corners of the building, the footing drain?
I would say whatever Mike thinks, the project engineer thinks is, is relevant to the, his project proposal, but also, yeah, so like the buildings, the, where the stormwater management system is gonna be, and the, then the outlets for all the, for all the drainage, were, were the foremost on my mind, the two outlets.
I think that, I think that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, the outlets would be good for me as well, if, if I'm gonna be there, that, that's what I would look to.
Yeah, and that's pretty much gets us through the whole property, too, so then through the limited disturbance area.
A- and in the instance that you're not able to attend the sidewalk, uh, Nick, we would have this, uh, recorded and, uh, post it to you, too.
Yeah, that, that'd be perfect. Um, I, I just, because I, I, I heard it. Um, do we know what endangered species exactly are gonna be on this property, or are, are they, are they plants? Or, and if, if not, are they, the species terrestrial or aquatic?
We won't know that until we hear back from the DEP, yeah.
Okay, cuz that would be fantastic to know, so.
Yeah, we'll be fine.
That's, that's what we're gonna, we'll file this in the NDB report that comes.
Okay, perfect, yeah, awesome. All right, perfect, thank you.
I, another question while, um, we're discussing this, would the commission have any interest on staff reaching out to the property owner where the pond is, so that you could watch that property as well?
Probably, it's the watershed, so yeah.
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 I mean, if we're gonna be there, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, our, yeah, I'd like to see the, the pond if it's possible, definitely. I'd like to see what kind of, uh, uh, biodiversity it supports.
Well, Mike.
I mean, you can see it pretty well. It's not heavily forested down through there. It's pretty open, so you can see it pretty good from our site. But if you, it's up to you.
So if we get permission?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if we don't, then we'll view it from yours.
Exactly, agreed.
Thanks for the suggestion, Dave.
Yeah, I agree.
Any, any other things that we would like to put on the table before we move this to a, a vote? No other questions for Mr. Mizuko or Mr. Bruno? Okay, so I would entertain a motion. It's my understanding that the commission is leaning towards accepting this for site plan review. Yes, do I need to send one?
Sounds like it.
Yep.
Anybody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Terry. I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
My second.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Uh, any discussion? Hearing, do I need to include this sidewalk in the motion? No.
You can make that a separate one if you want.
Thank you very much, okay. Uh, so hearing none, I will go ahead and call a vote, starting with the commission on, on the screen. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, so hearing none, I will go ahead and call a vote, starting with the commission on, on the screen.
Hi.
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 Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to request a sidewalk and we need to discuss the dates on that.
Yes, I will say my availability, uh, between now and the twenty seventh, especially on weekends, is not great. Uh, I would, I could be best available, you know, uh, uh, unless there's a weeknight that would work for the board. Um, either Saturday, the eleventh, or Saturday, the twenty fifth, or Sunday, the twenty sixth.
I'm gonna open my phone to look at my calendar.
The only option for me in those dates would be the eleventh.
A- a- and this is, and that's only if the commission wants to hold a sidewalk on the weekends. I don't know how much daylight we'd have if we tried to hold this after hours.
I think after hours.
Well, I could do a five PM after hours for all I care. Like, I'm pretty flexible with that. So if the commission's available for that, I can probably be more flexible.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, go this twenty seventh morning.
Uh, Sep- September twenty seventh, you mean?
Yeah. Just go and get it out of the way.
Uh.
Do we need to give them time to flag everything out there?
Right. That, and also I will be out of town that weekend, the twenty seventh, twenty eighth. As I will be the weekend, the fourth and the fifth. In goes for the eighteenth and the nineteenth.
Which I had. So the eleventh was.
I can reach you guys any year.
So I can't make that work on Tuesdays or Wednesdays or Thursdays for most Fridays. Maybe, I don't know. I, my schedule doesn't allow me to get out probably in enough time. Do you know when sunlight is gone? We're gonna be traversing through the woods.
Uh, right now, sun sets at six fifty and we're gonna lose about one to two minutes per day every day.
I think so.
Sorry, hunting one on one.
Yeah.
A lot of time in the woods.
Yeah. So that, uh, do you work as well in, into the evenings or have other commitments with your life?
I have, um, class on Wednesday nights and I can pretty much, you know, make my site on Reuters, I pretty much can make my schedule.
Okay.
You know, so you could do it after work during the week, right?
I, I would say that for.
Changing from still.
Yeah. Tu- Tuesdays and Thursdays are, are out for me. I could potentially. I could potentially maybe do a Wednesday or a Monday work. Okay, maybe for me as well, as long as we're looking at like five thirty maybe or six.
I could do that on a, on a weekday night. I could do that.
Uh, so depending on what day it is. Uh, Kevin, what about your schedule?
I'm more flexible weekday. So if you pick a weekday, I could probably act the way I still, unless something comes up with work, because that's obviously gotta be priority. But right now, there's nothing committed during the week. So you guys pick and I should be able to make a weekday work. That's the case.
How much time do you think we should get them in order to get everything stick? Mr. Mizuko, do you want to weigh in on that? How much time do you think you need to get the site prepared for a walk?
Uh, what days were you thinking?
Maybe a Monday?
Uh, Nick, uh, this coming Monday?
Not necessarily.
What's that, twenty ninth?
Yes.
Well, how much time do you need, Mr. Mizuko?
Probably a couple of weeks. Yeah, a week, not even.
Alright. So not this upcoming, oh, this upcoming Monday is one week, so.
So maybe the twenty ninth would work?
Yep.
Okay, so the twenty ninth is not work?
Maybe I don't have to be there. It's other people that are gonna be there.
Well, you should have a quorum. So at least three people should be able to commit. Ideally, you'd have four in the case of one person not being able to something make it.
Um. Oh, and.
Uh, listen, Monday, the twenty ninth is five by eight. Um, pending anything from work, of course. I mean, that, that would be.
Terry said she had a meeting. What about Monday, the sixth?
That's fine too. That, those, those dates are all good. That, that's part of the month is flexible for me.
Okay, soon as I could be somewhere would be five thirty to six, somewhere in that range. Could you do the sixth?
Yeah.
Could you do the sixth? Kevin can do the sixth. Nick can't make it. I could do the sixth. Could you do the sixth?
I can do the sixth.
Okay. Can we do the sixth at six?
The sixth at whatever time.
What, what time did you say sun, sunset is, Kev?
It'll be about six forty by that time, six thirty, five to six forty.
Alright, let, we'll do five thirty and I will do my very best to be there as quickly as I can.
That'd be very helpful.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
What? I understand. I, I can't because I have.
No, no, I was saying six, push somebody to finish the work there, but. Whatever it was.
Five, oh, five thirty doesn't work for you?
It'll work.
It'll work?
Yeah.
So five thirty on the sixth.
Done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need to go on that?
You should, you should make a motion.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for us to schedule a sidewalk for Thirteen Pleasant Street on October sixth, Monday, October sixth at five thirty PM. Who wants to make that motion for me? Terry made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nico's seconds. Any discussion that we didn't already have? Hearing that, I will call a vote, starting with the members on the screen.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Thirteen Pleasant.
So staff will be more timely with the review comments for this application. And I'll make the point for, uh, our consulting engineer, Todd Ritchie with SLR Investment Corporation, to have his review comments in. Commissioner Mizuko in a timely fashion, hopefully will, uh, allot enough time or leave enough time for him to have a response for you. So you guys could have, uh, a productive discussion when this continues on October twenty seventh.
Excellent. And that works okay for you too, Mr. Mizuko? I'm sorry, I, I think you said yes. I'm losing track.
That works.
Okay, good. Alright, then I think that closes Thirteen Pleasant for tonight, does it not? Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Bruno.
Thanks for your time.
Having this.
Thank you both.
Welcome. Uh, and I think that brings us back to Thirteen Redwood Drive.
Yes, it does.
So we have a draft resolution that was created by Dave in advance of this meeting. Boy, I do it wrong. I did do it wrong. Oh, no! Fix it.
It's like an M.
Okay. From Monroe.
That's.
Okay, but it's, I would like it to be a crane when you're finished.
Yeah, it is that you have the title on it.
Okay.
Anyway, um, um, while I'm putting this away, do we have anything else for this that needs to get put in there?
I didn't see anything else.
Oh, this is redwood drive, okay. Excellent. Um, the commission had, uh, encouraged staff to prepare a draft resolution of approval. It is very borderless, so there's nothing out of the ordinary for this resolution yet. But if you want there to be any specific conditions added, considering the discussion that you guys have already had as far as tonight, let me know. Happy to make an application.
And so members on the screen, this is in the drive, so you can feel free to open it.
It is actually not in the drive.
It was? No?
Wait, uh, it's attached to one of the emails.
Oh, he emailed it to us. I apologize.
Yeah, he did email it to us. Yeah.
Like, I read it. How did we?
Because I'm remembering now that I also did not email this to Mike, to Mr. Mizuko, I will put this up on the screen so we can scroll.
Star Wars music engaged.
That's right.
I am going to add that item to my calendar while I fill that up.
Oh, computer, please don't bug out now. This should be a really tight, bad time to do that. Oh, wait. I don't have to do it though. Oh, work arounds. Okay. Yes, I know you can.
Do, do we know when the, um, construction of this is going to be? Um, absolutely.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Service space, can you see my?
I'll be honest, I'm reading it on my own screen because he emailed it to me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading it on my, uh, on my, my phone. I, I had it written.
Can you see this, Mr. Mizuko?
I mean, here, I'll check just to let, I'll check, make sure it's coming through.
Okay, I, I, I will scroll through this slowly.
Yep. Yours is coming through, by the way, Dave. I'm reading it on my.
Yep, it's coming through. I can see it.
Thank you very much.
Those little thing that printed out today.
What did you print these out?
Oh, I did. Yeah, no, I did.
I'm sorry.
Please take my stuff.
I just, did you print this out too?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm so sorry. Here I am thinking I'm in this place in my pit board.
So. We're talking about adding a condition of approval?
If, if the commission wants one, then we could certainly do that. Hopefully, if my computer allows me to. That's being very finicky at the moment.
Is there something nice to it?
I'll give a pray, please, for the chair on top of the table.
That usually makes things go well.
Because number one, the commission finds at the end, I don't know what section that is, because the commission finds that proposed activities will not have significant adverse impacts in your regular well and areas. I don't find that true as the plan state, is stated now.
Okay.
This finding is based upon the evidence provided. Right, so that's like, uh, that's our saying, yes.
Yes.
If, if, uh.
Where does it say, like, in, in, in accordance with the conditions? But so long as, like, yes, as long as.
Well, so, so your, your reasons or, or your possible reasons for this, for your decision are based on, this is language I took from your regulations, right? So there's, so there's no, there's no language in your regulations that says this reason is based on conditions such and such. Because for some applications, you may not have any. Uh, because, because you are just within your rights to approve an application as is without having the need to make any conditions, right?
Right, but we're, he has, he, he will allow, allowed to do so.
Correct, correct. Um, so if you go to, let's see. Oh, I'm just trying to find what section I took these from. Oh, yes, it's right there. Four, four, one, four, four. Why don't, can we put a pin in that and craft the conditions first? Would that make sense?
Yeah, whatever.
And I'm gonna try to.
Nick, are you there? Were you able to find anything about the parameters of the?
Yes.
Yes.
Quantities for, could you see that miscellaneous, uh, set number six that's on our draft resolution of approval, that condition that says the applicant shall limit the usage of any fertilization materials to be non-synthetic?
Yes, I, I did find it and I did find the number as well.
Okay, I don't love that. I mean, we, I, I was the one pushing to have something about fertilizers and the excessive use of fertilizers put in.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
It was for one application, particular application, but it stayed here.
So, uh, I, I want to piggyback on that because, well, first of all, I, I agree with Nico on this. Um, the statement that we made was a generalized statement that we can put into each and everyone, so that way we could standardize it per site.
That's why we left it in.
We don't necessarily have to do that though, because given the nature of each individual application, it might have different necessities for fertilizer, using, not using, or things that may or may not impact the wetland.
Right.
Um, if we can make a broad statement, not me, not a broad statement, but if we can make a statement that covers the basics in specifics, that would be great. Or if we need to take it on a case by case basis, we might just need to alter that statement a little bit each time pen- pending, uh, the necessities for each application.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're looking to create some, some verbiage that we can use in applications where fertilizer is going to be a part of the equation. And I think it's probably helpful to Dave, um, he probably has a bank of these that he pulls from to some degree, yes?
I, I, it's, it's not a bank as much as it's.
You go to the old ones.
I, I, I review them from your previous.
I would recommend that you start a bank. So that, so if we can have some language that, because I don't know that it would be different.
But what do we?
They're gonna be, right, that's what we're gonna craft right now. So. So.
If, if, if we could craft a standardized statement, that would be excellent. I don't know if it's a possibility, but if we could, that would be, that would be very useful for all of us.
I don't know why it wouldn't be because the statement as it stands right now is the applicant shall limit usage of any fertilization materials to be, and it currently says non-synthetic. And what we're looking to change is to change the non-synthetic part of it to be a little more, um,
specifically.
Yeah, thank you, specific.
It also has to do with the amount. The amount and, and the want, and the strength for.
So then, okay, that's fine. We can have that discussion. One of the things that I recall having discussion around the amount in the past is who's going to regulate how much they're putting down? And that I've, I've heard from applicants, I remember being part of the conversation, that no applicant is going to be or no property owner is going to be interested in putting more fertilizer down than necessary because it's expensive. So how would we regulate, what would be an appro, how would we know what would be an appropriate amount of fertilizer for any particular project in order to write that language in there?
What did you find, Nick?
So naturally occurring, uh, in our current, uh, watersheds. So go, going off of like a, a, a very clean stream into a wetland, you would usually find that uh, limiting nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus are going to be around like point zero, zero, three percent. Uh, so there's a very small amount or, you know, you could think about that parts per billion. So you're thinking three parts per billion is usually the amount. Wetlands, anything usually that starts exceeding five to ten parts per billion, you start getting an uncanny amount of growth that can severely alter, uh, that ecosystem. So fertilizer.
In the water or that's what the fertilizer levels need?
No, that, that's in the water. That's in the water. So when fertilizer runoff occurs and you have fertilizer, when you're using fertilizers that are heavy in nitrogen and phosphorus, and that will increase natural levels of over five parts per billion is when you start getting, you know, eutrophication events, so mass algal blooms. You start having a die-off of indicator species, um, and things like that. So that, that's what seriously alters it. So, um, what I think.
So what are the recommendations for what those levels of phosphorus should be?
Yeah. Yeah. I would say, so fertile, so I, I was just kind of thinking about like drafting up a statement. Um, so limiting fertilizers, uh, that limit the use of, uh, limiting nutrients. So things that are in lim, uh, that, that are not in excess in, in wetlands ecosystems, including nitrogen and phosphorus. Uh, and to, to regulate that would be very tricky because again, we, we, we need to set a measure on how much fertilizer you're using. And then, you know, you'd obviously have to take into account where it's being used, whether or not it's going to be washed away easily. So uh, I think the general rule should be that, you know, applicants would have, you know, in, in this particular case, expectably would have to limit the use of heavily, uh, induced fertilizers that contain high amounts of nitrogen and phosphorus and would have to use it, you know, as sparingly as possible.
Is it possible? With a number?
I don't think so.
I don't think it's possible.
Not a, not a number of how much. Not a number of how much fertilizer is being used, a number on what the percentage of phosphorus and nitrates are within a fertilizer product.
Yeah, I could, it depends on the fertilizer that is being planned to be used, but.
I'm saying, are we able to determine what levels for that product would be beneficial or would not be deleterious to use? And write that into our language. So I don't know what those numbers are. I'm just going to make something up, but to, to add it into language that might work, right? The applicant shall limit usage of any fertilizing materials to be products that contain no more than X parts per million phosphorus and nitrates.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure there's, there's a number out there that, that would work. I, I think the, the issue is though, is that in, in order to like get an exact number, you would have to know the existing percentage in the water. We would, I would need to know like the existing percentage that's already in the water because that would.
That might prove to be too challenging.
Yeah.
I wanted to piggyback on this too, because as good of a concept as this sounds, when you, when you make a blanket statement that reduces the quantity of nit, uh, nitrates and phosphates within a fertilizer, it doesn't also limit the quantity of that product that, that they are going to use. So quantitative exposure at reduced exposure rate is going to have the same net effect as something with a higher volume in a lower quantity. So I, I think that a more generalized statement that says to utilize uh, fertilizers that either do not contain or contain minimal phosphorus and, and nitrates would be the most beneficial because regulating it would be excruciatingly tough.
Can we reframe this question? We're looking at the type and amount of project, product that's being used uh, in the area of the wetland. Why don't you refrain that to see, because the whole reason that you're looking into this is to see what effect, what possible effect this could have on the wetland, right? Why don't you reframe it to say if, um, if there's something, if there's some kind of report or something that's prepared that shows the concentration of what these elements are in the water? And if they exceed some certain threshold where algal blooms or
indicators.
Some, 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 some into that effects could be, uh, a noted risk. Then you would want to address what that concern is either by.
That would trigger us to include that condition in an application.
Well, I, I, I think, I think that's the way you would, because you want to frame your conditions based on concerns to the wetlands.
Right.
You, you, you don't want to regulate stuff that's going on in an open area any more than you have to. Your, your focus is what the effects are.
Right.
So if you focus on the source, the wetland itself, and you refer me to say, uh, and, and you refer me any condition to say the concentration of such and such should not exceed so many grams or whatever per, per liter or whatever.
Before, pre-existing conditions, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 I'm saying post-development.
So we're gonna ask them to submit.
Well, well, this is, this is just.
No, I'm asking, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's up to you what you ultimately ask for. I'm just throwing out ideas, right? If, if, if you guys want some kind of report to come back to you after the work is done, that says, you know, the, the concentrations of such and such have not exceeded whatever the quantity that you set is based on the concern for algal blooms or whatever other things could adversely impact the wetlands. Then is that?
I just, my concern is that that's post, right? So if it does, and we get the report back and it says, well, we have, we have a problem because they overused these fertilizers.
But then, but then, but then guess what? Then that's an adverse impact to the weapon and they need to address that, right?
After the fact?
Well, it, it wouldn't be after the fact, it, it would be, so let's, let's wrap this up for one quick second. And, and, um, if, if I'm speaking on a line or if anybody wants to offer any comment, feel free, anybody can feel free to do that anytime. For, um, a zoning compliance certificate, for a certificate, but for a certificate of occupancy to be issued, there has to be an analytical survey that gets submitted, a letter of substantial completion from the project engineer that says all the stormwater management elements were installed in our functioning as design. And I go out and do an inspection. Okay, this will be a good segue, minutes later on the agenda, so we get to see the reality of it. But anyway. So, so if, if there's something out there that is, that is glaringly off from what is on the site plan, I, I can say to the applicant or the developer, hey, you didn't comply with what the inland wellness commission approved you to do.
Yeah.
Therefore, I cannot.
Sign off.
I cannot sign off on this until such compliance is made. So if you guys craft a condition that isn't ultimately addressed, when that time comes, they have to address it before I sign off.
Understood, my question.
Unless they come back to amend their application.
I understand, and obviously it would be in their best interest to not have a problem that they then need to go back and address.
Yeah.
But my question is in the scenario, the way that you look, and I understand this is challenging to figure out how to craft, but let's say that they overused fertilizers or, or used fertilizers that had concentrations that had an adverse impact, it's already in the water. So how are they going to address that? It's already there.
Right, right. Oh, so that's, that's not to say, well, just because, just because in the water doesn't mean it's permanent, right?
No, I understand.
So, so, so if, if, if there's some mechanism that's in your conditions that says, you know, if something doesn't comply, then you have to address it, then I could go back to whoever's the contractor and say, well, listen, you need to get rid of whatever's causing the problem and then give us something back later on that says things have returned back to the way they should be.
I'm just not clear on how they reverse it once it's already entered the water supply.
So the, the reversal process would be, it would be natural. Um, wetlands already are heavy phosphorus sinks, so over time it would filter out. And, you know, anything that was lost would return back to equilibrium once the problem would be addressed. It would just take time. So that would be more like a, a monitoring situation. It, it, it should return unless what they, what, what adverse impacts have happened are so severe that it's completely damaged the wetland to a point of no return or to a phase shift. And at that point, then I think there's a much bigger issue.
But they can't rectify it is the point. So.
I have a solution for all of them.
Why, why would they not be able to rectify it?
If I apply fertilizer and it then permeates into the soil and into the water system and it's there and the concentrations in the wetland are high and we, and they test the water and they bring it back to us and they say, we have these high concentrations, there's no way for them to extract it. Time will cause it to dissipate throughout, but the, the contractor can't alter what's in the water.
Can I, can I go back to, this isn't entirely relevant, but I think it's good context for you anyway. There was a, a site off of Worcester Street that an applicant submitted an application for them to remove contaminants like chromium and mercury and other heavy metals. And they, as part of their application, told you, yeah, we intend to remove all these items and we're going to give you guys a monitoring report that lets you know how effective we were at doing that. And if there's any follow-up that we need to do, because for some reason all those things were removed, we'll let you know what those are. Because that's, that's part of what your conditions of approval were. Is that if there was anything that was still an issue, that they had to resolve it.
I just, is there a mechanism by which phosph, well, maybe, maybe Nick, Nick can speak to this. Is there besides biological filtration? Which I understand is what the wetland's purpose is. Is there a way for human and, all right, there's a nap. Is there a way for humans to rebound that?
Not, not the way, like, not without heavy invasive measures to my knowledge, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, no. Yeah, yeah.
So the whole reasoning behind this thought about fertilizer was, is an attempt to save the wetlands from like, of overuse, misuse of fertilizer and not just by the developer, like really, there was a whole reason for thinking about this in the first place was like, we're building, we're permitting a building site near a well and and we're worried about like ongoing use by the homeowner of these misuse of fertilizers. Of course, he's not incentivized to do so financially. Fertilizer's cheap and a bun, you know, and it's easy to overuse it and people want a green lawn, so they overuse it. That's the problem. We're already, we're already way too far ahead. What I've learned, I've learned a lot since we put this in here in three years, four years, and we're on this. And what I'm realizing now is we can avoid all of this talk and the inability to enforce it. Basically, which has been pointed out years ago. Yeah, he's right. So, but what we're learning now is we have the ability to guide the engineering and construction process of a new development within the, within our open review area to say, oh, you want lawn here? Well, we're worried about the, the, the watershed and the fertilizers reaching off the lawn and going right into the wetland. That's what swales are for. That's how we learn, that we can start to contour the land so that it holds water by retention, retention ponds and swales um, to hold that fertilizer in its lawn place on grass. Also, the importance we're learning of riparian buffer zones, which are these forested, uh, native plant, you know, gray, uh, basically like fully ecologically functional zones that naturally filter and protect the wetlands and buffer those wetlands from these man-made green lawn scapes that have to be maintained with fertilizer. You know, that have very low ecological value and importance. We can now encourage through our exactly what we're doing now by talking to the engineer, knowing what we're talking about, guiding, maybe we don't want that lawn, don't, can you do a conservation seed mix instead of lawn that doesn't get, doesn't have to be green and mowed, but it grows the whole year, gets cut once a year. Uh, that's the first layer of a riparian buffer, then you can have your shrub layer, then you can have your forest edge woodland, mature trees, the root zones, all of that works in the wetland's favor. And then it basically, so basically makes all of this talk as I can see it potentially nullified. It's good to educate people. We want people to be like, don't over fertilize your stuff. Sure, it's not really what we're doing here. But I think we can nip it in the bud by do, be more, just, just doing exactly what we're doing and keep learning and keep getting better at identifying site-specific uh, situations that demand the modifications or the either, either the building a swale or not touching it, like we're talking about in a previous application review tonight. To basically say, okay, like that lawn is lawn spacing, it's a collected as lawn and it'll be protected by, by basically like channeling and, and and, um, geographic modifications or the plant.
So, so long as you can craft your conditions to have some direct correlation to protect, protecting the weather or preventing direct adverse impacts to the weather.
That's what it's all about.
Right, right. But so, so as, as long as, as, as long as it's wordsmiths, the condition is wordsmiths to reflect that, then you can have the condition say whatever you think is appropriate.
Can we get back to the, we're talking about Red 13, Redwood Drive.
Yes.
Can we get back to the specific, can we table that or I don't know what, I'm not sure.
If we want to approve it or add it to, to this resolution of approval, we're gonna have to make a decision on it tonight. So we can't keep pushing out the, the approval process for this.
Move on from this.
If I can answer the question that Nico put on the table, so Nico asked about this particular one. Yes, I understand that there's another condition that you would like to draft to put into it. If the mission is in agreement that we can accept, and we may not be, this is just a proposal. If we can accept the language in this proposal as it stands for miscellaneous number six with the non-synthetic language and then perhaps have a larger discussion at perhaps our next meeting when we're going to be looking at a bunch of different things theoretically. To change the language to, to, because this is a larger discussion than I think we can support tonight and we do need to come. So is.
Agreed, agreed.
Would you be comfortable, Nico, leaving this language as it stands for this application?
Yeah, I guess so. I didn't want us to get hung up on that. We have an actual, the actual thing.
I understand that you have another condition, but are you okay with this one? As it stands, if we left it this way? Miscellaneous six.
Yeah, I think we should add low, low nitrogen and low phosphorus. Yeah.
And you could just add that, yeah, you could just add that as, as an amendment to the way, non-synthetic.
I will put this back up on the screen.
Again, it's like, we should almost just take it out because it's not like we can condition this. It's not like there's no way to enforce that concept, like there's no.
Right, there's, yeah.
We could recommendation that we're making. It's more of a recommendation that we would make for every development that the rest.
But we have other things that we have done like that in the past. So you're, you're right. It doesn't really have a lot of teeth to it, but for tonight, yes, so for tonight, for this application, which we do need to vote on tonight.
I would ignore that. Let's focus on the thing.
Well, but, okay, so you would ignore it and just leave it the way it is. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so Terry is okay with that. Nico is okay with that. Kevin, I believe you just said that you are okay with that.
Yes.
Yeah. Nick, how do you feel about it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, you're okay with it?
Yeah, because if we're gonna, for, for the purposes of this application, um, it's, it's fine because we need to have a larger discussion on it. And when we get to a, a, you know, a, a more concise, better discussion on it, I think we could craft a much better statement. So.
Agreed.
So then, so then to, to find, to put a period on the end of this sentence for this particular condition. Getting tired. Nick, I'm looking to you for, for this question. If we write, as Dave proposed, low phosphorus, low nitrate, is that descriptive enough for someone to understand what that means?
Yeah, because every fertilizer, like fertilizer will advertise like, hey, we are a organic with high phosphorus levels or we have high phosphate in our, in our fertilizer for exceptional plant growth. Like, they, they definitely have those.
It exists, low phosphorus?
Yeah, they, they, they make low phosphorus solutions.
Okay, and they are, and it's either written on there or there's an understanding of what low phosphorus means. It's not just an irrelevant term.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, uh, I used to work at one of the, the plant stores around Bethel and I mean, like, you know, the, the people who usually, you know, work there, the, the growers and the gardeners understand that very well. So anyone who had a question on it can, can ask and they know.
Well, I, I don't want to presume where the materials are going to come from.
Well, yes, I mean.
Maybe this, maybe we write that language in here, but I don't want to make it onerous for them to follow it if they're going to try to follow it. It would not be able to be decipherable for that.
So do we want to leave six alone or do we want to amend it?
I, I.
We don't know exactly.
Well, we gotta make a decision. So I'm comfortable leaving it as it is. I am for this application, for a larger review.
This application.
Are you comfortable leaving it as it is?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Kevin, are you comfortable leaving it exactly as it is? In this application?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Yes, I, I was speaking. Uh, yes, I'm hundred percent okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Oh, yeah.
Great, and we can move on. So we'll leave six as it is.
Any other conditions the commission would like to revise or add?
He has.
No, sir.
Mr. Mizuka has his limited construction area. It's still going in the same spot that we had talked to him about a month ago. Right up to the wetland where to get the clearance, the, the slope he needs to exit his footing drain pipe right at the mouth of the the well in there. Um, and we talked about how he could limit the disturbance of that, which, I don't know how to write this into a condition. It doesn't seem possible.
So why don't I try to take a stab at this and you guys can follow along. Ready?
Yeah.
Yep.
So limits. Clearing. Shall uh minimize the removal of mature vegetation. Trees or other growths greater than six inches in diameter at breast height. To the greatest extent practical.
And I would just like to bring into that beautiful language that Nick had mentioned, that it's not just mature trees that are providing a benefit here, but that there are shrubs and.
So noted, but that's why the applicant is re, is proposing to supplement that area that they're disturbing with the silky dogwood, the high brush blueberry and that other plant that escapes my memory.
Thank you. But, you know, that's so open for uh interpretation. Because.
Well.
They're gonna clear that within the limited service.
Well, let's, let's, let's put it this way. Let's, let's put it this way. There's a lot of invasives up there. We all saw them. Would you rather those stay? Or?
No, because we're talking about a very specific section of the map here of the property that has known bases. It's this old wooded area within about fifteen feet of the wetland.
Sure.
And it's not a buffer zone that's critical to keep intact. And he's gonna cut into it.
Well, he's, he's going to do work in that area, yes. But I, but I think it's understood that if there's a tree in there that doesn't need to be taken out, it's gonna stay because it's just more expensive for him to remove it. And it's something that you guys want to keep. So it's a win-win for everybody. So why, why would it get taken out if it doesn't need to get started? And, and if, if the commission is so inclined to um to want to know what exact trees could possibly be left behind, I, I don't, I don't see why you couldn't have.
Should we go market?
Well, it, well. You had done something similar for, for Jennifer's Way. And you had done something similar for um Forty Seven Star Lane where you ribboned off all those black dome trees.
That's good.
Well, well, for, for Jennifer's Way, those, those trees that you asked that were on the opposite side where that area.
Outside the limited service, the sil- silves, of course, he didn't touch it, he wasn't allowed to touch it. Well, that's, he's like giving them as gifts. Those weren't within his limit, his purview of disturbance. He wasn't allowed to touch them. Well, everything else in the limited disturbance and in silves.
Right, right.
Do what I want. We have, we don't have a, a system to.
So, so.
We need a fee in lieu. If we're gonna talk about that.
Well, right, but, but perhaps, perhaps language like what I just drafted as condition A would address that.
It's a good start, I think. What do you, how does it read?
And I quote, the applicant and or their project contractor shall minimize the removal of mature vegetation, trees and or other growth greater than six inches in diameter of breast height to the greatest extent practical.
So I just, I have one more thing to add because uh it, the um, the native uh the, the native low-growing uh shrubberies, so things that are not mature trees. If we want the best of both worlds when it comes to removing invasives and keeping the native shrubs, which is very difficult. Uh if, if they do decide to completely cut down all of that stuff, uh maybe like a conservation or native seed mix as a replacement after the fact would be good to reseed. So it would take back the, the spot of the invasives and replenish native growth.
So, so, so.
So any disturbed areas to be reseeded with? Native conservation?
Well, because that, well, then you have the distinct, then, then you have the distinction, which, okay, which, which part of the property is actually gonna be manicured lawn and which part is gonna be uh left alone.
He may already be stating what, what he's, did he state, a lot of the guys, most of the developers state in their site plans what they're gonna do with the disturbed areas.
So that, so that's, that's why you have those buffer plantings there.
What about where a swale's going? He's gonna be digging around the wall there.
So why don't we?
That's good. Any.
Why don't we bring that up?
To be great.
We're good. Now.
Specifically bordering the wetland, but do we need?
Right, so, 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 so let's, so just keep in mind that these are the original site plans. So the locations of some things on here may not be uh in the rough spot with respect to what you just saw, but, but look at this with respect to the plantings, okay? I, I, I think you should focus on that. And the reason why I say that is, let's go.
Why did he move his pipe where the footing drain outlets go? He moved it from going over to the.
That, that's, that's the original, remember?
Yeah, but why did he move it and now it has to go deeper?
Because he wasn't getting enough of a downward, can't think of the right word right now. His brain is going offline. Thank you.
I'm gonna bring up the revised version on my screen. Can everybody see this?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, so. Here's an idea. And I'm just gonna float it out there and see what you guys think. So obviously, in the area where these plantings are, right? Can you see my cursor, guys? Okay, i- i- in the area where these plantings are, you're not gonna have usable on there, right? Because you're gonna have these plantings there. This is the buffer. So would you want to supplement this area eh, where, where the buffer plantings are gonna be placed with that conservation seed mix? Does that, does that achieve what you're looking for?
I don't know if that's appropriate or if it will grow underneath the stuff that's there.
So, so i- i- it wouldn't, it wouldn't grow underneath those plants. It would go around them. So in, so in the space around those plantings, you would have the conservation seed mix. Or you could have that. Is what I'm saying. That, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
What's, what, what otherwise is there? Is there a maintenance plan for the property, for that area? Do we know?
Let's take a look at what they have in their. So we have planting notes, all seeding and planting and maintenance of the two chapters forty, chapter six of the twenty twenty four guidelines for stormwater erosion settlement control. And then you'd have installed landscaping. Uh, that's gonna incur at final site stabilization. And the rest of these are just general notes about installing your stormwater items, your E and S controls. The planting seasons for the specified seed mixture shall be as defined the two thousand two negative guidelines for stormwater erosion settlement control. Unless directed otherwise by the town.
Yeah, is he gonna try to mow around all those plantings or?
Well, I, I wouldn't think so, but that's, but that's where, you know, if you, if you want to give him instruction that he should leave that space alone and you're saying that he should leave that space alone on the basis of providing a riparian buffer to protect the wetlands.
And he did talk about a swale going in. Is that still?
It's to block the runoff from the driver.
Swale going in over here too, remember to block, um, to block runoff going down. Didn't you talk about a swale going over there on the north end too? To capture runoff from the lawn?
Swell on the north end, only on the south end as we're staring here and there's swelled down by the.
No, there is a swell. This is Mike Mizuko. On the north side, just to grade the water away from the house. So it's.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
And we'll, it'll just, it's a very slight swell that'll run sort of parallel with that existing driveway to the north.
But are those plantings themselves, weren't they to be up on a berm kind of? The, all the, all the buffer plantings? Well, remember last month we talked about like where they're.
Well, some of them are near the, some of them are near the berm for the stormwater management system. But there's no, there's no berm. We're not bringing material to create a berm where the other plantings are, but you know, along the pool. Along where the pool is and then the stormwater management system. Yeah, that area is, that's graded up a little bit. So those will be planted in sort of a slightly filled area.
Br- bringing, bringing in material to create a berm would be more of a disturbance within your.
Maybe, no, I'm, no, I just thought it would be material from outside or something from the grave. From the grave, so. So, yeah, I mean, if, Mike, since you're here, a- are you gonna seed around those plantings with like a conservation wildflower mix or something or?
Well, there's already, it's already a seeded area, so you know, they're just gonna put the plants, probably will have to, you know, maintain, otherwise I think the grass would just, you know, turn like into hay. So I think there'd have to be some sort of period of maintenance, at least a couple of times a year, just to keep it at bay.
So they're just gonna be planted in lawn as is there? Those trees of the, of the wetland, of the.
That's, you know, that's what's there now. I mean, I don't know how you're gonna get rid of it and create, you know, what do you create there? It's it's already, you know, it's already lawn. I just don't know how you're gonna get rid of it.
Well, part, part of that area, especially to the north of this wetland is already established lawn.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, but, but the rest of where those buffer plantings are proposed, especially to the west of the weather, that area is wooded.
Right. And we were suggesting to leave the wooded stuff alone. And if they want to add their, their buffer plantings, which I think he did, he moved them to the left a little bit.
Yeah, more towards where the, like behind the pool is where there's a lot of invasives.
Right.
So, but, but from the pool going south.
There's still invasives there, still like where the pool is heading south. You start to transition out of the invasives. Sort of like where the end of the gallery system is on the north, the north corner there. You start transitioning back into like a, you know, regular forested area, but that from, from that point in and up and almost halfway through the pool and, and even further west is very heavy invasives.
So the goal here is basically just to control, to minimize the um disturbance to this area, the, the forested wooded area directly uh abutting the well. Buffering the well and from human disturbance.
And, and to piggyback off on that, any area that is disturbed, that's part of this buffer, you would want some kind of replacement planting that is native and that could be successful to take its place of the invasives.
Is the berm gonna be mowed or can, is that gonna be to?
Not, well, the berm's pretty much planted, so. You know, imagine over in that area there, they probably would just plant it and maybe mulch it.
So what do we need? What do you have written there?
So, so I'll go back to the condition that, that uh is just drafted at the moment. The applicant and or their project contractor shall minimize the removal of mature vegetation, trees and or other growth greater than six inches in diameter of breast height to the greatest extent practical.
Typically in the area uh how we would work, directly surround the well or be specific with distances, which should be in our regulations.
Okay, well, so, so what, where, what would you want to be added here?
What? Which line is open review area?
Uh, the open review area is the dashed line that has the RA symbol. It almost runs out to Redwood Drive. So it's, it's most of the site.
So, uh, I think Mr. Mizuko said that the distance between the thick dashed line and the boundary around the wetlands is about fourteen feet. Is that correct, Mr. Mizuka?
That's correct.
Okay, so Nico, looking at this map, this is about fourteen feet. Do you, do you want to say fifteen feet? To bound it, is that what you're trying to get at? Also, remember though, that this is a driveway. Right? See, this is the driveway that, that lands on both properties. And that's.
No, here is this.
Okay, but it, it's right there. And this is where they're putting the swale in. So just the, the stuff that you're thinking about in terms of trying to preserve here.
Driveway, stone wall, swale.
There's, there's just not a lot in there. And the wetlands are over here. So do you want to, if you're looking to make?
There were trees along the stone wall line.
Yes, there are. But if you're looking to prevent runoff going in this direction, isn't this the area of most concern?
Yes, right.
Okay, so then do you want to say within a limit of fourteen feet or fifteen feet over here that they will be preserving trees? Because over here.
Right.
Is a, is a different matter.
Yeah.
That was already, when we went down the driveway, that was already wooded anyway, because we basically.
Yes, but they're going to be taking that out to some degree, some of it in order to put in.
Said it was gonna be a small machine in there. He's not coming in with the.
Yeah, agreed.
Bulldozer.
Yeah.
And just bulldozing down all that. Agreed.
I'm not so sure. He was talking, we were specifically talking about the, the, for the, the footing drain outlet here close to the well and I was asking how, how delicate can be cutting through those woods there?
But doesn't the footing drain? The footing drain comes around.
So, so here's, an, an easy way to address that would be whenever they're doing their clearing activities, I'm present. Or they do a, a, a uh, uh, not a pre-construction meeting, but like a pre-clearing meeting before they do the work. And then before or after the work is done, I go out there to verify that where they've cleared up to is what, you know, is understood where they can clear to. Did I address that concern?
Yes, um, can I just make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Can you move to the greatest extent practical to the beginning of the sentence? The applicant and or the project contractor shall minimize the removal of mature vegetation, trees and or other growth greater than six inches in diameter of our site. With, with the goal of maintaining existing.
Well, wait, where, okay.
To the grace, yes, yeah. To the greatest extent practical, the applicant and or the project contractor shall minimize the mature vegetation. Uh, with the, so that can be deleted to with to preserve uh or with the goal to pres.
Preserving the right, existing riparian buffer. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, with your goal of preserving.
The existing riparian buffer.
And then I will add.
Yes, sounds good to me.
And then Nick was talking about not just mature trees, but she's talking about other things too, which is about the point.
It is, but it's going to be really hard for them not to disturb the low level, the low line stuff, so I.
To preserve the existing riparian vegetation buffer.
And 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 for the invasives, especially if they're larger, even if they're invasive, you want them out.
Right.
You don't want them to stay.
Is it vegetated or vegetative?
I think it's just vegetation.
Who's what?
I think you could use either, that means slightly different, but they were both.
Vegetables.
Land, okay, yes, are we happy with this language, gentlemen, it is nine thirty and we still have other business to attend to.
We do.
Yes, we do.
I mean, I'm I'm fine with it, I was fine with it uh uh before as well, I think it's just just more refined, so I don't mind.
That was, that was.
Okay, Carrie's good with it, I'm good with it.
Do you want to look at the at the reasons for your decision? One and two.
I didn't see anything wrong in there, should I?
What's that, I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, I didn't see anything wrong in there or excluded from that, so unless I'm missing something, somebody tell me.
I just want to make sure that it passed muster with you five. That's why.
Do we need to say something about you being there to make sure?
If if you want that language in there, let me know where you want it.
It would be a part of this condition that you've just drafted, correct?
You, you don't want a condition to get too bulky.
Yeah, yeah, cuz cuz when you make it too lengthy, it takes. Too specific.
I will state that Mr. Mizuko is is Mr. Mizuko and holding him accountable for the impacts of other people that might have been differently might not be fair in this case. So I. I I think, for me, I will only speak for me, that the way this is drafted and the conversations that we had with Mr. Mizuko and his intention to preserve as much of this as possible. I'm comfortable with the language that we have in and.
Agreed.
I I take my direction from you guys.
That is how I feel.
This is very site specific, I'm just talking.
That is how Carrie feels too, how do you feel, do you?
I think it's good, I'm just, I was just wondering if we need to to, you know, cover cover ourselves like in specific, very specific terms. To make sure that that the.
So so I'm asking, does this sound okay to you, or do you need more in there than what we have?
Also, remember, take the legal standpoint, the more specific you get, the less leeway you have for interpretation.
Yeah, there's a lot of room for interpretation now.
Exactly that, though, but interpretation.
Let's try and focus, because it's, we still have stuff to do, so how would we all say this? Comfortable with it, what language would we use?
Um, just say Dave's going to be there to make sure they don't bulldoze the whole thing.
Okay, I don't think we want to say that.
So how about, how about we do?
The only way.
To these. Shall meet with the applicant and. Project contractor to verify. The location of the clearing, let it mine. As shown on the approved. Site plans and. Any. Vegetation. That uh does not. Now. Or not some, there you go, not subjects to. Condition aids to be moved. And. Wetlands patient. Follow up discussion. After said work. Is completed to verify. Clients. Who site.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Gentlemen on the screen, are you comfortable with that language?
Yeah, I think that's 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 really good, that's that's much more specific. Um, and yeah, I like the idea of having inland wetlands agent on site to make sure that they're complying with uh. You know, the the removal and and how and how much and and what they are removing, I think that's good.
Wonderful, thank you, Nick, Kevin. I think you're muted, sir.
I keep doing that, I apologize, um, no, I'm absolutely fine with it, uh, adding a little specificity doesn't hurt. And uh, that that's about it, I mean, I trust Dave to do his job anyways, so.
We're all comfortable with that language, so we are good, so at this time, are there any other conditions or conversation that we want to have on this draft before we take this to a vote?
Uh, not from me, Madam Chair.
Then I believe at this point I will entertain a motion to approve the draft resolution. That we have just completed on the screen. Based on conditions one through, what are we at?
Nine.
Nine. I'm not looking at the paper, because that's not what I'm holding in my hand, it's on conditions one through nine.
As amended.
As amended.
Based on reasons.
And reasons one and two.
Right, and and what I would suggest, Madam Chair, because we're doing all this work to this this evening. You read what's on the screen, especially for the conditions allowed for the.
Okay, so all of the conditions?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Or unless you would, unless you would want me to read them, because I can cover.
Go for it, Dave.
Okay. Uh, so the following dishes, conformance guidelines, one. Construction practices shall be in conformance with guidelines decided in the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual and the two thousand and two Connecticut Guidelines for Solar Erosion and Sedimentation Control by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Two, any alterations to the approved sheets, including minor onsite changes of the erosion sedimentation controls, shall be submitted to the commission for further review. Modification of permit approval revision if located within a regulated one hundred foot open review area indoor wetlands area as necessary. Alterations located beyond the regulated open review area shall be reviewed by the land use department staff. Erosion sedimentation controls, three. Erosion sedimentation control measures shall be inspected by the inland wetlands agent for appropriate installation before the commencement of any and all construction activities. Four, said erosion sedimentation controls shall be maintained and fully functional throughout the construction process until the site is fully stabilized. The commission and or designated agents reserve the right to require additional erosion sedimentation control measures as necessary. Five, any and all sections of erosion sedimentation controlled devices shall be installed as shown on the site plan sheet. Miscellaneous, six, the applicant shall limit the uses of any fertilization materials to be non-synthetic. Seven, prior to the issuance of his only compliance certificate, the property shall be inspected by the inland wetlands agent to verify that all construction activities are substantially complete as to fit on the submit site plan sheets. Eight, to the greatest extent practicable, the applicant and or their priored contractor shall minimize the removal of mature vegetation trees and or other growth greater than six inches in diameter at press height. To preserve the existing riparian sized vegetative buffer to protect the onsite well and from any direct adverse impacts. Nine, prior to the commencement of site clearing activities, the inland wetlands agent shall meet with the applicant and or project contractor to verify the location of the clearing limit line. As shown in the approved site plans and any vegetation, not such as condition eight, to be removed and or cleared. Inland wetlands agents will will conduct a follow-up inspection after said work is completed to verify compliance with the approved site plans.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the application as drafted.
The draft.
Amended, as amended, the draft.
Amendment.
Well, as amended and read by Dave here in our meeting, based on conditions one uh one through nine and reasons one and two. Woo.
Second.
No, make the motion.
Oh.
Someone.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Terry, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Nick has our second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote, starting with our commissioners on the screen.
Aye.
Aye from Kevin.
Aye.
Aye from Nick.
Aye.
Aye from Nico, I from Terry, I from Danielle, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Amanda, I'm sure you got all.
Thanks, Mike, for still.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for all the time, man.
Thanks, Mike, thank you very much.
Going back to our agenda somewhere, uh, okay, so that closes out Thirteen Pleasant, we.
Thirteen Redwood.
Sorry, thirteen Redwood, yes. Yes, and we did thirteen Pleasant already, so now we have our regular meeting minute to vote on.
That's correct.
Okay, so I would entertain, did everyone have the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting on eight eleven twenty twenty five as well as six sixteen twenty twenty five? Hey, thank you very much, I would take a motion to, uh, any amendments or? Any discussion on changing the vote happens after we make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to uh accept the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Terry, you're all about motions tonight, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Nick seconds it, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote, starting with commissioners on the screen.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all right, motion carries, was everyone in attendance for those things? No, okay. Alrighty, then we get to staff report, hi Dave.
Hi, I'm going to keep this brief, it's almost ten o'clock.
Great idea.
Walnut Hill Road, if you're going out towards Stony Hill and you're driving. East and weed road is on your left, the property in question is on your right, Anthony Pe- Anthony Peoria, Anthony Pierre, excuse me. Owns two pieces, actually three pieces of property, one of which has his house, the other one, which is the subject of this agent approval, he removed a tree on. Or is planning to remove a tree on, when he actually does the work, I'm going to go out there and inspect it and make sure that he followed what he said he was going to do, any questions?
Something.
Nope.
Excellent. Seven Rockport Road, this is our ongoing segment with Mr. Bjorken, I don't have any further comment apart from saying Mr. Andres. Land use counsel, I attended a status conference back in July and uh. I'm not sure, uh, off the top of my head, when he said he was going to have another status conference with Mr. Bjorken's attorney. But when he does have that status conference, I will give you another update, update, and hopefully before then, you may actually have an application, but I hold my breath. The other item that I have, which thankfully you guys all added to the agenda tonight. Fifty-six Confish Hill Road, and the reason why this is pertinent for you is because. This falls right under the same conversation that we were just having about monitoring and zoning compliance inspections. Let me pull up on the screen what uh I'm talking about, because I feel like that's going to make a lot more sense. Blah 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 blah, that'll work, that'll work, come on, there you go. Beautiful, everybody see my screen?
Yes, so.
Okay, so uh, one of these guys is Louis and the other guy is Joffrey. They were the uh site contractors that did the landscaping, especially in the area for the buffer plantings, which is what you're looking at. These, if I'm not mistaken, um, are herbividing, okay? And behind that you have a cluster of high bush blueberry, you have another cluster of spice bush. And another cluster of silky dogwood, what a coincidence, the same soil scientists for this project, they just happened to thirteen Redwood Drive, and they used the same type of plants. And it was a stroke of luck, these guys happened to find literally like. The last of each of these types of plants, because we're getting to the end of the growing season and these guys just so happened to be looking for the C O. Almost the very same week, so I said, y'all need to make sure your plants get in and actually have a chance to survive before um frost, correct? And they did not use any fertilizers, fertilizers, what they used instead was mulch. And it made a nice little bowl around each of the plants, so that when they watered it, the water wasn't going else anywhere else apart from directly towards those plants, hopefully. Roots get a chance to establish and start taking those on the groundwater and the plants don't go into shock. Deer don't eat them all to death, because apparently that was happening the same week, um, and that these plants might have a shot. Uh, it was all well and ordered for me, the plants were where they were supposed to be and they. All were alive when I last inspected them, so I saw enough on their zoning compliance certificate. Do you guys have any questions?
No, no.
Where is it?
No.
Six Confish Hill Road. Yeah, you guys were not to do a sidewalk for this, because this is a site that uh is unique and that has a vernal pool.
Oh, it's that.
Towards the back, which is what this is, way in the back I hear.
Oh, right, so.
They have not touched that.
How, what, in in practice, as this goes, how how does how does it um feel to you being on site, having seen it firsthand, like as far as uh?
I I I can only be as effective as the tools that I'm given to work with, right? So these, the developers for this property were like, why do we have to plant these plants? And I was like, because the commission told you to, like, that's what's on the plans, y'all have to do what's on the plans.
Say that again, somebody was giving you some sort of a feedback?
Well, well, they because.
The developer.
So, can we, right, let's keep it moving, yeah.
The 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 contractors didn't understand why these plantings had to be there, they didn't, they weren't aware of it when they came to me, did there's only compliance inspection, I pointed out to them on the plans that they had to install. So they went out, they bought the plants, and initially put them in the wrong location, I had measured, told them where the right location was, they replanted the plants, I remeasured. And they put the plants where they were supposed to.
So, yeah, okay.
So.
Yep.
Right.
Is there more that we should know about this?
No.
Awesome, all right, so. Then you have some more.
It's indicative that some of the times that the developers or the contractors don't. They're not, they don't necessarily think, oh, I better.
Yeah, that's why he goes out and inspects.
That's why I'm the watchdog, that's why I love to do that stuff. Uh, the last things that you have here are just aquatic pesticide permits. Uh, just updates for when they're performing treatment, if you guys have any questions, let me know, but they're pretty straightforward, you guys don't have to worry.
Thank you.
Cool.
That closes staff comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much, that brings us to commission comments, if we have.
On the comment.
Uh, that happens after a thought.
Summer gun, I get a.
Sure, okay, so I've, if we have commission comments, I'm going to request that we hold them to a later meeting as it is almost ten o'clock at night.
Good.
Any objections?
I submitted, I started some information to Dave um to to share with our commission uh just regarding some of this stuff.
Wonderful, looking forward to reviewing that.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us public comments, anyone from the public wish to comment? Hearing none, Amanda, is there anyone on the screen who we should invite to comment?
Nope, I got nothing for you.
Okay, so we have no public comments, with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to adjourn us at nine fifty one P M. The motion, Terry has made the motion, do I hear a second?
I will second it.
Yeah, I hear Nico seconding that motion, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll vote, starting with the gentleman on the screen.
Aye.
I'm good.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all right, motion carries unanimously, thank you everyone for attending today, Amanda, thank you so much for all your hard work, Dave, thank you very much.